Welcome to City of Bellevue's regular council meeting for October 12th, 2020. Welcome, everybody. Today is Indigenous People's Day. And I was looking at Facebook earlier today and saw a wonderful post by council member Zahn. And I thought I'd ask her to read that today, please.
Happy to, Mayor. Really in celebration of both the Kosailish and the Duamish that were settled in our lands. So Indigenous Peoples' Day. Today, we celebrate the people who first called this land home. We remember the struggles and tragedies they endured. We honor their place in and contributions to the shared story of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so could we have a call to order, please? No, that was me. Can we have roll call?
Absolutely. Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. We are going to do our flag salute. Councilmember Lee, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Yes. Can everyone say together the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. By nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is Affordable Housing Week proclamation. And we're going to have Councilmember Stokes read that for us.
Okay, it's coming up. Okay. City of Bellevue proclamation. Whereas, all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity. And whereas, everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas, 320 Bellevue School District students were identified as homeless in 2020. And 7,520 Bellevue families are spending more than half their income on housing. So are housing insecure. And whereas, the 2020 point-in-time count found 6,228 people in King County, including 446 on the East Side. Sleeping outdoors without shelter while in all home identifies affordable housing as a critical component of making homelessness rare, brief, and one time. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has made the financial challenges facing moderate and low-income households worse. While the number of people experiencing homelessness remains at a crisis level. And whereas, united in an effort to raise public awareness, communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week efforts to inform the public of the critical need to preserve and increase affordable housing in our communities. And whereas, the City of Bellevue endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week and recommends itself to ensure, recommits itself to ensure that all people in our community live with dignity and safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now, therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 12th through 16th, 2020 as Affordable Housing Week in Bellevue and encourage residents to join and support.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Okay, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we approve the agenda, I wanted to mention that Leo Slower, the Director of King County Department of Community and Human Services, will be joining the meeting this evening to provide information under item 12i Resolution 9826 and answer questions, any questions that the council may have. So with that, I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda is approved. City Clerk, do we have people signed up for oral communications tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are three individuals signed up to speak under oral communications. And the first speaker is Rachel Krynsky. Ms. Krynsky, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, council members. Hello, Mayor Robinson. I'm here tonight representing LifeWire and also as the co-chair of the King County Alliance for Human Services and as a member of the East Side Advocacy Team. To speak in opposition to Resolution 9826 and instead to urge your support for the help through Housing Bell currently before the King County Council as part of a countywide solution to chronic homelessness. The King County Alliance includes a wide variety of service organizations supporting residents of cities across the county with a wide variety of issues. And although we support residents with many different types of needs and many different types of housing needs, different income levels, different homelessness issues, all of us stand together in support of health through housing as a priority solution to the homelessness crisis that we've collectively identified as a community for use of this new revenue opportunity. It's vital for us to act as a region to house those who are most vulnerable, meaning households at or below 30% of AMI as quickly as possible. And the county is poised to do this by purchasing 2,000 units in very quick order. If Bellevue approves a separate tax, it will pull $8 or $9 million out of the county's tax, which will really hurt the county's ability to bond against these funds and purchase the necessary units. So we urge you to take the long view and to courageously stand in unity with others across the county to address the biggest problem that we face as a region. This is a problem that we know how to solve and that we finally have an available resource to solve. Homelessness is only poised to grow bigger as the pandemic continues and as congregate shelters have become safe during COVID and as the moratorium on evictions will eventually come to an end. So this is absolutely a critical time to act. We urge you not to dilute the county's ability to be effective as a county. And I don't mean the county as a government. I mean the county as all of us together with this new resource. We declared a homelessness emergency and a need for a regional approach. And I ask you, please do not adopt a city sales tax, which would remove Bellevue's contribution to this regional solution for chronically homeless people in our region for all of us to address together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Wallace. Mr. Wallace, can you hear me?
I'm going to put on mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Charmaine. Thanks to all of you. It's nice to get a chance to come back and present to you about this important topic of increasing the sales tax by a tenth of a percent. It is a fairly rare instance where I would be in support of increasing the sales tax, but I think we found it. As you all know, but maybe some listening don't, when I wasn't on the city councilor in my day job, what I do over in Seattle is produce workforce housing, including rent-restricted units under the multifamily tax exemption. And so I'm quite familiar with what it takes in order to build the workforce housing that's called for under Bellevue's Affordable Housing Strategy and how difficult it is to hit that lower-than-60% of median income product that the strategy calls for. So we can use incentives and the things like the multifamily tax exemption and incentive zoning and making the permit process easier and less expensive to build workforce housing units. All of that works for both the middle-income units that we're talking about at the 80% of median income level in the city's Affordable Housing Strategy. It also benefits the low-income, but as is clear from the Affordable Housing Strategy we adopted in the data that's in the appendices for that, you really can't get to the 60% and below median income product unless there is a funding source for it. Now, if we look at the city with the growth that's coming from Amazon and others, even if you just look at Amazon alone, what's under construction right now and fully leased to Amazon is going to produce 14,000 jobs. That's not the only jobs that are getting produced. So we have this huge burden that's coming at the city and a need to address this strategy faster. The funds that you're talking about from this sales tax increase will provide the money to get to the scenario three in the Affordable Housing Strategy, which is something I never thought would be possible. So Bellevue has the opportunity here to chart its own path and really to address Bellevue's extreme need, probably more than any other city in the county right now, that's coming from this growth, need to provide for this sub-60% of median income housing and use the sales tax to do it. That is being a regional partner. If Bellevue can act nimbly more quickly than the county, which is likely, and use these funds that are coming from Bellevue's sales in order to provide the affordable housing that we need. So I think this really is not, is not as though the county will not have money coming in if Bellevue goes its own route. And it's critically important that Bellevue does go its own route because we need to address our own affordable housing strategies that we adopted. And these funds will provide the revenues to enable us to do it. So I encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you. The final speaker pre-registered this evening is Will Toastburn. And Mr. Toastburn, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hi, and thank you, Bellevue City Council. My name is Will Toastburn, and I'm here representing Solid Ground. Solid Ground is an anti-poverty community action agency that serves families and individuals throughout King County. We are very appreciative of the support that the City of Bellevue continues to provide our Housing Stability Project, which provides eviction prevention funding and services to families in Bellevue and throughout King County. I'm making public comment today to express Solid Ground's opposition to Agenda Item 12i Resolution 9826. We must stand strong with our collective conviction that solving homelessness can only be done through a unified and regional approach. We cannot operate by isolating ourselves and denying the existence of deep inequities in our communities. We must be brave and bold and work in collaboration as neighbors and fellow community members. It is the only way to achieve true progress. The Health Through Housing Initiative of King County is our best chance of working in a unified and regional manner and serving those in our communities that are most vulnerable. Voting in favor of Resolution 9826 will undermine the county's Health Through Housing Initiative, which is a bold plan to provide permanent supportive housing to thousands of King County residents, including making available housing quickly in the next few months to serve people who are really struggling during a global pandemic with the weather worsening. Community and experts all agree, permanent supportive housing is the most impactful, equitable, empowering, and cost-efficient way to solve the problem of chronic homelessness. And we know that BIPOC communities and residents are much more likely to experience chronic homelessness. As a small permanent supportive housing provider, Solid Ground sees the power of the permanent supportive housing approach every day and knows that it is in line with our anti-racist approach to solving poverty. We urge you not to pass Resolution 9826 and dilute the impact and effectiveness of the Health Through Housing Initiative. A vote for Resolution 9826 will take away critical funds needed to quickly find housing for people during a global pandemic. It will also lead to a further complication and confusion of services, funding, and bureaucracy in our communities that already makes living in poverty an exhausting and oppressive trap. Please take the approach of collaboration, unity, and a commitment to equity. Please reject Resolution 9826 and stand in partnership with community, with providers, and governments across King County to make the bold commitment to ending chronic homelessness that King County residents deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. And that reaches the end of our pre-registered speakers.
Okay. Do you want to put a call out for anybody else who might be on the phone?
If there is anyone else that's connected to this meeting, if you are connected with a computer, please raise your hand if you would like to speak to the council. If you are connected with a phone, please use star nine to raise your hand. Mayor, I do not see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, so that brings us to the report of the City Manager, Mr. Miyake.
Mayor and council members, I have one item under the City Manager's report tonight, and that is a status report on the neighborhood area of planning, specifically the great neighborhoods in Northwest and Northeast Bellevue. Just by way of background, the Department of Community Development is well underway with the relaunch of the Great Neighborhoods Initiative and two council-identified neighborhoods in Northwest and Northeast Bellevue. Staff from the program will go over progress to date and highlight the capacity building strategies and engagement efforts this evening. This was last reviewed with council back in June 1st on the presentation with the relaunch of the Great Neighborhoods Program. Since then, our staff and our communities and these neighbors have been working online in Phase One of the efforts. This is an informational-only type of presentation this evening. And with that, we have a number of staff from Community Development joining us. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Neil King, the Assistant Director, to introduce the staff that will be joining him on this presentation. Neil.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to have Nicholas Matts, Senior Planner and Project Manager for the Great Neighborhoods effort here tonight. He will be providing a brief update on our efforts in engaging with the Northeast and Northwest Bellevue neighborhoods. So I'd like to now hand it over to Mr. Matts.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. It's great to be here tonight to bring you up to speed on the Great Neighborhoods Program that we launched in June as City Manager Miyake pointed out to you when we reset NAP. Just like to start, we will be very briefly tonight in deference to your time. Neighborhood plans bring the city's broader comprehensive plan to life in a local way. They provide guidance as each neighborhood grows and evolves. The Great Neighborhoods Program is developing these plans. Staff, residents, and stakeholders using creative and inclusive outreach and engagement adapting to COVID-19 realities will develop plans that secure our neighborhood's future as livable, inspiring, vibrant, and equitable communities. Our presentation tonight will address the topics and issues that you raised previously. We're going to briefly highlight progress to date, capacity-building strategies, and capacity-building highlights. We'll end with letting you know what's next. We've discovered over the course of these months since we last briefed you how flexible, how resilient our neighborhoods are when it comes to engagement and their willingness to share what they want for their neighborhoods, as well as prioritize those wants. We are right in the middle of Phase One capacity building now, and the slides we're seeing tonight highlight the different segments of the management brief that was provided in your packets. We are right in the middle of this Phase One capacity building, albeit in an online environment with specific stages of our initial engagement, beginning to create the vision and our data walks, and I'll get into those in detail. This slide also helps define a continued focus on the scope of the planning process, the five-stage, three-phase planning process, as the vision statement and data walks, which will produce our neighborhood profiles, continue to work. And our work continues to distinguish those with the priorities identified by the work of community members for their neighborhoods. This page, excuse me. This page features some of the more extensive list of strategies that we featured in the management brief. We provided a much lengthier thing, but I wanted to highlight these because they directly address the more difficult-to-engage aspects of the community's engagement while showing the effectiveness of this necessarily online approach that we briefed you on in June. These are the ones that are standing out for us. EngagingBellevue.com is our online platform. It's a two-way engagement platform that we're asking people to participate in. It's the largest information source. It also works to provide such things as mapping tools, our narrative story tools. We use it to engage people in our values survey. And we are making it, and as you're well aware, it's becoming a more robust use of the city's online platforms to be able to communicate in a reliable way for people who are in the Northwest and Northeast Bellevue neighborhoods. They know where to go to get the information, and it's this one stop. We also are particularly pleased to bring you news. We've hired four cultural outreach assistants in specializing and focusing on different cultural communities, the Mandarin, Spanish, Korean, and Indian communities in Northeast and Northwest Bellevue. We've brought these community folks on board, and we're making immediate use of them as they work to develop their own community connections, their own networks, and then to bring those folks back into the neighborhood planning process. We've also been able to use other somewhat innovative online engagement tools, such as Otter AI, which essentially provides real-time reading access for hearing impaired residents and members who are participating in our online workshops and our online engagements. And we've used it for two community workshops already, and we'll continue to make it available for future requests. We're also extensively invested in social media tools, Nextdoor, Facebook, WeChat. Our Chinese Cultural Outreach Assistant, she recently posted into a Chinese language discussion area, and it had 1,200 hits in a matter of days around people wanting to find out more about this. We also wanted to highlight, and you're also aware, that we've begun the Goose Chase and Scavenger Hunt, a citywide effort to give folks the ability to explore and look into their own neighborhoods and look into their own areas that COVID has necessarily forced them to be more familiar with, the places where they live. That's running right now, and it goes from October 2nd to October 30th. I also want to note here, and it's in the memo, the burgeoning role that our schools are playing in NAP engagement, including specific working relationships with the principals of Interlake, Sherwood Forest, and Ardmore, as well as bringing on a student intern from Interlake. Each of these school efforts in Northeast and in Northwest Bellevue seek to partner with schools to develop online engagement that aligns with their curriculum. That's particularly important in this COVID reality. Nasarga Ramesh, who is our Interlake intern, will be tasked with developing a specific student-led online engagement exercise for both neighborhoods. This page features the event highlights that have occurred during Phase One. We've been able to make fuller use of online tools, such as the previous Otter AI reference that I made, and the Zoom format with its breakout rooms. And just recently, in the lower right of the slide here, our vision statement workshops, we were able to use the annotation tool in Zoom, where participants themselves write their thoughts on a virtual whiteboard for all to see and hear. We can capture it, and they can prioritize it. So we've had four of these events. We had our soft launch in June, our initial values conversations at the beginning of September. We just completed two successful vision statement workshops, one for Northwest and one for Northeast. And we are continuing to have ongoing, what we call our virtual coffee chats. We're focusing not only on individuals and homeowners associations, but we're using our neighborhood outreach ambassadors to engage their communities in these different areas. As well, of course, our meetings with PTSAs and other student bodies. We offer that on a continual basis, anytime scheduling for these individuals. So far, we've had over 22 of these separate meetings. Going forward, the next step that we're working on is what we call our data walks in our neighborhood profile. We'll be doing that here in November. And just point you to the last part of the agenda memo. In terms of what's next, we've just had our vision workshops. We are looking forward to doing our neighborhood profile work. We expect by the end of the year to be able to have solidified that information that we're going to be sharing with these communities around their neighborhoods. We're going to be able to bring out our draft vision statements, and we'll begin our work on the meat of the plan work starting early next year. Great Neighborhoods is both a challenge and an opportunity related to COVID-19. When people have been feeling isolated and powerless about their futures, thinking about where they live can offer deliberate opportunities to rebuild community. So we're doing this online. We're also doing it in real. We expect to have an old-fashioned door hanger to get information out in November. We're going to use that to distribute out to all the communities. And we do anticipate that we'll continue to do direct mail as well as the online engagement work that we're doing. So with that, I will stop sharing. And take any questions for any of the staff team. Just want to point out, too, Elizabeth Diret and Brooke Broad are also staff members on the Great Neighborhoods team. And we are keeping folks in these neighborhoods busy. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for your presentation. That's great news. Are there any comments or questions from the council? I see Councilmember Lee. Hold on. Anybody else and Councilmember Zahn? And that's it. Okay, starting with Councilmember Lee. Go ahead.
Thank you. We'll keep it down to three minutes, right? Okay, thank you. Great, great work. Just to indicate, show how under COVID-19, we can do something that's very creative and something out of the box. And I like the term you use, "capacity building," because you're doing something new. The question I have is that you are engaging the community through the trusted ambassadors or trusted messengers. I see you're hiring some people who have connections to the community through language they use, through the normal social network they use. And you have high school students. And that's very important because a lot of families, you know, through students, that they can be connected. And I just want to emphasize, however, you know, when you're developing this, you're developing the vision statement workshops. Where does the council fit into this? We are part of the community. And some of us, I think, have been around for a while. We may share some of the insight. And we have some of the connections that we can help you with, especially when you mention trusted messengers or ambassadors. I hope that the council member has proven to be trusted, number one. That's how we get elected. And hopefully, we can be the ambassador for you. So don't forget us. The example you gave is, you know, this Chinese individual that put on the Chinese website, you know, or social network, the social network they use is WeChat. Okay, you say you're very impressed that they're bonding 1,200 contacts. If you had talked to us, some of us, I'm sure, you know, that we are familiar with WeChat. We can bring you 5,000. Easy. So use us. We can help you. But my question is a social statement, especially that, or vision statement, sorry. I think that's where, I think, we council members can help you because we can bring some of the perspective vision represented in the community to help you. So don't forget us. I'm really impressed what you've done with this. There's a lot of work you've done. You did all the right approach. But the point I like to make is, when you do a workshop, when you do a, you know, meeting with folks, with the communities, don't forget that we, council members, can be very good trusted messengers for you.
Thanks. Appreciate that offer, Councilmember Lee. I appreciate that offer. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate the work as well. I know it's taken a bit of fits and starts to get this going. I like having the cultural outreach assistance. So were those the top languages? Because I thought that Russian was also one of the languages, but maybe based on the area of Northeast or Northwest Bellevue, these are the key languages. Is that right, then?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct, Councilmembers on. We looked at, based on our demographics, we looked at what the top two languages are. And when we did the hiring process, we encouraged people with facility in those top languages, and those are the ones we ended up hiring. So yes.
Okay, and then the piece around using technology for the hearing impaired, I really like that. And my hope is that while we're in this COVID period, during this entire capacity building and plan development, really leveraging opportunities to reach even deeper into perhaps communities that we don't traditionally hear from, to really get their perspective. And I'm also curious about, in those two areas, I think there's also a fair number of renters. And so understanding how we're reaching out to some of those areas as well. Maybe it's in the multifamily building managers engagement. So just really wanted to highlight those couple of areas and make sure that as we look at this, that we are being as broad as possible.
Yes, ma'am. We are definitely focusing on residents of these communities, not just owners and not just renters. We're taking a page from the NEP's work to reach multifamily communities because NEP was recently, in the last few years, in both of these communities. And so... And so going through managers, building managers, homeowners association, condominium associations, making sure that we gain access to the people who live, work, and have interest in these communities. Absolutely. So thanks.
Okay.
Thanks for the reminder.
And then my last question is, I think when we first talked about this, we talked about while we were working with two neighborhoods, we were teeing up the next neighborhoods. So I'm just looking at the, the timing. As we look at plan adoption, will we actually then start to do some outreach to the next two neighborhoods then? Or will that be modified as we now have some lessons learned from this first round of, yeah, this work?
Yes, ma'am. We, we expect to overlap the next two neighborhoods, which are teed up as Crossroads and Newport Hills. We expect some overlap in terms of the, the three-phase plan that we've put together for each of these two neighborhoods. But we're, we're confident that we'll be able to manage those in a shared community way. We're confident that we're able to manage that online presence in a shared way. Again, relying largely on engaging Bellevue and relying on our staff and our council members and the people who know these communities to do so. But we will, we do expect some overlap of the, the work of this first round and then the startup of the second round.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Appreciate it. Moving on to, we have two boards and commissions that have new positions being recommended. First, we have Councilmember Stokes making recommendations to the Arts Commission, and then we'll have Councilmember Robertson making a recommendation to the Library Board. So Councilmember Stokes, would you like to start?
Yes, yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, I'm really pleased to bring forward recommendation for appointments to Art Commission by two really outstanding candidates. The first is Monique Martinez, to serve a four-year term expiring on May 11, 2024. Monique is employed by the Bellevue School District. She works with students in arts and a number of other areas. She's been very active in equity matters at the district and, and just has a, is very engaged, very attuned to Bellevue and what's going on in Bellevue, particularly working with the Hispanic community, but the community at large. And she was just, just outstanding, and I think she will be a very, very good addition to the Arts Commission and brings to us a little different perspective, which is good. The second one is Judy Goudy. She'll be serving a partial term expiring in May 31, 2022. Judy has a long history of working for different organizations and being on different boards and commissions around the city, particularly with Imagine Housing, and she was the president and then on the board. But her business, which she is retired from now, was with Interior Design. And she has been responsible for the interior design of Imagine Housing projects for quite some time. So anytime you go into one of their buildings and you see, you see pictures up or, and, and the way things are pushed, you know, set up and everything, Judy's been involved in that. And she brings a really strong position, you know, background to that. And what was so exciting was defining two people with different approaches, but just really great enthusiasm about the city and about working the city. So I'm really pleased to bring these both forward.
Terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Robertson, would you like to present your recommendation?
Certainly. I am presenting tonight James Rusk for position number four on the Library Board to serve a four-year term ending May 31, 2024. James is almost 20-year Bellevue resident. He also was active duty military for 13 years and is a veteran of Afghanistan, and then was also military reserve for 13 years as well. He has an interesting perspective, because he serves in executive protection and crisis management. And he uses the library a lot. He lives in Crossroads, which is an unrepresented area on the Library Board. But he had some really interesting comments about dealing with COVID, because as a crisis manager, he's been dealing with COVID for a lot of organizations over the last six, seven months. And so he was asking some questions about how the library is doing with COVID. And since we do sometimes have security issues at the downtown library that are brought to the library's attention, I think that he will have a very interesting perspective on how to make sure that all of our libraries in Bellevue remain really safe and usable to the public and safe from all types of things, including COVID. So he just, he only applied to the Library Board because he's so passionate about libraries, and I couldn't be happier to be putting him forward.
Great. Thank you very much. So is there a motion to approve these three appointments?
So moved. Oh, all second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations. We have three new citizen advisory advisors, which I appreciate. All right, next we have consent calendar. Deputy Mayor, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
So I can.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, terrific. So we have two study session items this evening, Mr. Miyake. Would you like to introduce those?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first item is on the water, utilities water main replacement program. This is an informational briefing. And the purpose of tonight's briefing is to provide information on history, goals, and strategies of the program, examples of water main breaks, emergency response and impacts to the community and project examples, and funding strategies and current, and current program, and the current program budget. A key goal of this briefing is to highlight significant and ongoing capital investment that is needed to ensure provisions of high quality drinking water for Bellevue's customer. Joining us this evening is Novel, Director of the Utilities Department, accompanying her is Linda DeBolt, Assistant Director in Utilities, overseeing engineering, and Brian Bartos, Deputy Director. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Nov.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miyake. I hope you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. So thank you for having us here tonight. I have with me Linda DeBolt, Assistant Director for our Engineering Division. And our presentation is on water main replacement program. This is the largest capital program in our water utility. So our briefing today is for your information only. No decision is requested at this time. We do have a couple of construction contracts that will be coming to council later in the year, in November, December timeframe. And we thought that we would take this opportunity to provide some background of the overall program in advance of those contracts. That agenda for tonight is to provide background of the utilities water main program, including the challenges that we face managing an aging infrastructure and our strategies of funding that program in the short and long term. I think we can all agree, especially given our experience during the pandemic, that clean and reliable water supply is critical to our community's health and well-being. And it's our responsibility as stewards of that important resource to make sure that we're maintaining the systems needed to deliver that resource. So water utility, actually all utilities are a very capital intensive business that relies upon complex infrastructure, much of which is underground and unseen by the general public. Proactive management of the system is crucial for reliable delivery of high quality drinking water. Our water system is valued at $1.2 billion. It's made up of over 600 miles of pipe, 24 reservoirs, and 22 pump stations, and thousands of valves and hydrants. This infrastructure is needed to provide water to every neighborhood in our water service area.
Ms. Otta.
Yes.
My apologies. This is the clerk. Your PowerPoint is not showing. Can you hit share screen?
Oh, my gosh. I am so sorry.
I was just gonna say something.
I, I, you should have spoken up sooner.
I didn't want to admit I couldn't take it all in without a picture.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, let me make sure that I am sharing my screen. Okay, would you like me to go back?
Yeah.
Okay, let's start from the beginning. Now, can you see my screen?
Yes.
And, and do you see the, okay, I am actually going to go back to the beginning. Oops. And not the beginning. And so, okay, let's see. Okay, so. Are you seeing the screen now?
No.
Oh, dear. Okay.
No, I'll take over the present, I'll take over the share screen from you.
Okay.
And I'll get it. So you can start talking, and I'll pull it up.
Okay, but I can still proceed with the, I can still proceed with the PowerPoint?
You'll have to tell Charmaine when to advance the slide, I think.
Oh, okay, okay. Charmaine, are you ready?
Yes, sorry. It's just taking a second to load.
Sorry about that.
Nope, you're fine. Here we go. Just let me know when you want to advance.
Okay, so as I mentioned, the water, the water system, water utility is a very capital intensive business that relies on complex infrastructure. Most of our infrastructure, of course, in the water utility is underground and unseen by the general public. So it's our job to proactively manage the system so that we can continue to provide reliable delivery of high quality drinking water. Next slide, please. Now, our system is valued at $1.2 billion. It's made up of over 600 miles of pipe, 24 reservoirs, and 22 pump stations, and of course, thousands of valves and hydrants.
Excuse me. I think, I think the slide that has $1.2 billion water system.
Oh, dear.
Next one, next page.
You keep going, next slide.
Keep going.
There you go.
There's, there's a timing issue here, sorry.
Okay, sorry about that. This is actually quite difficult, and I apologize. I did not realize that you were not seeing my slides. So as I mentioned, our system is valued at $1.2 billion, and it's made up of pipes, reservoirs, and pump stations. And this infrastructure is needed to provide water to every neighborhood in our water service area. Next slide, please. So now you should be seeing a high level map of our water system. And a few things I'd like to point out is that the water service area is bigger than city limits. In addition to City of Bellevue, we also serve the communities of Hunts Point, Yarrow Point, Medina, Clyde Hill, and a small portion of City of Kirkland. So Bellevue purchases water from Seattle through Cascade Water Lines. The water we receive from Seattle is delivered to us through the large SPU transmission line, which you see here in orange, running north to south. And other than this transmission line, everything you see on this map is the responsibility of the Bellevue Utilities Department to manage and prepare and replace. So the map here shows you locations of reservoirs and pump stations shown in, with red and green symbols. The discussion of today's presentation is actually the water lines, which are all shown in blue. This complex network of pipes relies on the reservoirs and pump stations to move water through the pipe system to all of our neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we have over 600 miles of water mains in our system. These are underground and largely invisible to most people until they fail. The pipe network was built some 50 to 70 years ago and is now past its midlife. As this infrastructure ages, it becomes less reliable and more prone to failures. This is not only disruptive and inconvenient to our customers, but it can also be very costly for the utilities. About 40% of our system, our white pipes in Bellevue are of a material called asbestos cement or AC pipe, which is very prone to fail in a catastrophic manner and with little warning, especially the smaller diameter AC pipes. The utility is proactively managing the risk of pipe failures and strategically planning for funding future pipe replacement costs. Next slide, please, Charmaine. So of course, as systems age, you get failures, aging pipes break. And so I want to next cover a little bit about the physical challenges of water main breaks by highlighting our experience with breaks over the last few years and give you a couple of examples of the kinds of impact to our customers and the utility. Next slide, please, Charmaine. What you should be seeing, I hope what, this is what you're seeing, is a map of Bellevue with a whole bunch of dots, red dots, all over the city. These are, these are main breaks from 2016 to 2019, just four years. For, and these are major breaks. So you can see that main breaks are not a rare occurrence. And, and like I said, this is just a four-year history of the large main breaks. They, so breaks, as I said, are costly to repair after they happen. This includes not only the cost to replace the damaged pipe, but also to address property damage claims resulting from those breaks. In 2010, we received over 100 claims and paid a total of $1.8 million in claims. The average annual amount paid is roughly about $170,000 in damage claims. In addition to the cost of claims for damages, there are a lot of other negative impacts for main breaks. Next slide, please. Water main breaks are not good for anybody, not our customers nor the utility. They have the potential to cause harm and to life and property. When they occur, our crews must shut off water to homes immediately, leaving customers without water for their basic daily needs until the repairs can be completed. Water main breaks have the potential to result in other challenges, including negative impact to drinking water quality, roadways and traffic, and streams and creeks. They can also compromise other utilities, including our own utilities that might be in the vicinity of that break. Next slide, please. So some of you may remember this, this incident. It was a West Lakes Mamish Parkway water main break that happened in conjunction with a landslide and road failure in 2012. As you can see from these pictures, this water main break resulted in not only damage to the, to major roadway and the hillside, but it badly damaged several properties. Of course, always our first priority is public safety, and we were very grateful that this emergency did not result in major injuries or loss of life. This break, however, was very disruptive to the community because of shutting down West Lakes Mamish Parkway, a major north-south connecting roadway. It was also very costly. Cost for this project, which included repairs to the roadway, replacement of the water main, and damage claims from private property owners, total $1.7 million for this one, one main break. To proactively replace this section of the water main would have cost us approximately $150,000 or one tenth of what this ended up costing the utility. Next slide, please. This break, which occurred just a few months ago, was on the shoulder of Lake Hills Boulevard near 150th, Fourth Avenue Southeast. This was an unusual situation caused by the soil conditions in this area. Here we have peat soil, which settled over time and due to compression. And that's what caused the water main, to, water main to lose underlying soil support. And then to top it all off, the weight of the van parked on top of the water main just exacerbated the situation, which is what resulted in the break and the flooding of the roadway. Our crews made emergency repairs that involved night work with loud equipment and work lights. We received many complaints from customers from having not only the noise complaints, but also having their water shut off. Especially, this was especially a problem for nearby Semina Swim Club and the Boys and Girls Club. This site will now be added to our CIP program to address the problem from, for the long term. And it will be a complicated and expensive. And it will be a complicated and expensive project due to the existence of peat soil, which will continue to settle. I'm going to now, uh, turn it over to Linda Debold, our Assistant Director for Engineering, to talk about our, uh, replacement program.
Thank you, Nad. As these past examples demonstrate, our utilities must address these challenges of our aging water infrastructure. Uh, we have a very proactive and ongoing water main replacement program that's in place to reduce the risks of water main failures by strategically and systematically replacing aging water mains. Next slide, please. The water main replacement program was initiated more than a decade ago based on engineering analyses, which I'll go into a little bit more in detail in the next slide. Um, and, and also based on, um, our, our ability to fund replacement, we determined that it was prudent to replace about five miles of pipe per year. We've been ramping up, uh, this rate of replacement over the past 10 years to achieve this goal. Uh, at this rate of replacement, it will take us over 100 years to replace the pipe network. This is not an overly aggressive schedule, but a prudent one. Currently, our goal is to focus on asbestos cement pipe. About 40% of the water pipes in the city are AC pipe. That's about 240 miles of AC main out of the total 600 miles in the system. We live in a region that's vulnerable to earthquakes. So while we replace pipelines, we consider the needs for seismic mitigation of pipelines in certain areas of the city that have poor soils. Because of the increased costs of seismic resistant pipe, we're strategic about where we use it. Additionally, we also look for opportunities to enhance water flows for firefighting purposes. Next slide, please. Bellevie Utilities uses an asset management strategy in developing and delivering our capital projects. This requires taking a holistic lifecycle approach in making decisions on which pipelines to replace and determining the optimal time to do it. So not too soon and not too late. In order to determine the priorities for pipeline replacement and the optimal timing, we have our field crews collect data on the condition of pipes by collecting pipe samples when they're working on them and then also keeping records of, uh, water main break history across the city. Combining that with, uh, acoustical testing that we do for our AC water mains and information on the pipe material, the size and the age of these pipes, we're able to estimate the probability in consequence of pipe failure. So all of this goes into our decision-making on which pipes to choose for replacement in our water main replacement program every biennium. Next slide, please. We also make decisions for project selection based on some additional factors. We work closely with other city departments to best align our water main replacement work with other projects, especially with transportation for their road projects and, uh, in utilities with storm and sewer projects. Uh, we want to get the most value for city dollars and to minimize disruption to our customers. So the same approach goes for state projects and those are private developers and franchise utilities such as, uh, huge sound energy and telecommunications companies when feasible. Because of all of these considerations, uh, there can be a, a bit of variability in the size and number of projects per year. Next slide, please. With this graph of our water main replacement program expenditures and the miles of pipe replaced over the past 10 years, you can see that we've been gradually increasing our replacement rate, uh, that's shown in the, in the yellow bars. And, and are getting close to our target of five miles per year. The costs of water main replacement have grown from about $2 million per year to around $10 million per year. You'll also notice that costs per mile of water main are rising and this is primarily due to inflation. So now I'd like to turn it back over to Nad to discuss our financial strategies.
Thank you, Linda. And, uh, Charmaine, we should be on the financial strategy slide. Thank you. So the seven year CIP budget for this program is 80 million dollars with annual expenditures of 10 to 12 million dollars. Given the ongoing funding needs, uh, of this program, the utilities must take a strategic and long-term approach. The most critical element of that strategy is the renewal and replacement fund, also referred to as R and R fund. Next slide, please. So this chart, um, it, it, it's very busy, uh, but let me, let me kind of walk you through it with piece by piece. Uh, the R and R fund is intended to ensure that funding is available to cover future water main replacement costs, taking into account that our water systems are aging and that replacement costs will increase in the future. Uh, and it's a mechanism to save for those future needs in a strategic and proactive way. This graph that you see is, shows our funding strategy for the water infrastructure since 1995. When, uh, you're not there, next slide. Uh, you should be seeing a water infrastructure funding strategy uh, chart.
Nope.
Go back. One more.
There it is.
Oh, good. Thank you. So this chart, uh, shows you our funding strategy, uh, since 1995, when the R and R fund was first established. So the black line that going across all these, uh, uh, line, uh, all these, uh, bar graphs is our, is the total, uh, annual funding for capital investment, both for projects in that year and in future years. The blue bars show the rate of, uh, great revenues that we need for CIP projects in that year, in each of these years. The green bars shown, uh, uh, show the years in which rate funding exceeded what we needed for our CIP. And these periods are really important because they represent years when reserves were accumulated for later years, uh, when we needed them. And, and that's shown in the red bars, uh, in, especially from 2013 till this year, is that the red bars show the years that we needed to use R and R reserves. So basically, we went into that saving account to pay for our current projects. And this is typically done when there are, uh, spikes in our CIP needs and current rate revenues are not going to be enough to pay for them. Uh, the other thing I'd like to point out is that, uh, we gradually increase rates to pay for capital needs. So you must be wondering, where's that? That's really the slope of that black line. That's the rate revenues. Uh, this kind of funding strategy allows us to put rate revenues aside in the early years. Uh, for example, in 1995, where, where you see that, uh, green bar and to use that money in later years, uh, like I said, in shown in red on 2013 to now. Next slide, please. Good news is that Bellevue is well positioned, uh, to meet the long-term challenges of aging pipes. Bellevue has a comprehensive long-term strategy to fund capital infrastructure needs now and in the future. By proactively planning over a long time horizon, we have adequate funding for water main and other infrastructure replacement needs. We have smooth and predictable rate forecasts and each generation of customers pay their fair share of system infrastructure needs. We are actively replacing, as Linda mentioned, we're actively replacing AC pipes, the most problematic portion of the city's water main system. And based on our current asset management analysis, replacing five miles per year is prudent, but not overly aggressive. At this rate, it will take us over 100 years to fully replace all the water mains in the city. All in all, the water CIP program and, uh, investment strategies put Bellevue Utilities in a strong position to serve our customers now and in the future. Next slide, please. And Bellevue Water is good value. For the price of one 16 ounce bottle, uh, of water from a grocery store, we will deliver over 90 gallons of high quality drinking water to your tap. With that, Linda and I are here to take any questions that you might have.
Okay, good job. Thank you.
And sorry about the, uh, snafu with the sharing.
No, that, that happens. No problem at all. So that was a great presentation. Um, I'm going to give her, everybody a chance to comment or ask questions and I will ask, I will call on people in this order, Councilmember Lee, Barksdale, Robertson, Stokes, Deputy Mayor, Noonhouse, Councilmembers on, and then myself. Councilmember Lee, as liaison to the Environmental Services Commission. I will have you go first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to, uh, represent the City Council's liaison to the Utility Commission. And, uh, the staff, Utility Department has always done a great job. And, uh, they have, uh, one, one department that is, uh, uh, is non-traditional, not like any city department, but they are, uh, a, uh, separate business, uh, center. So I think they're doing well, uh, they are very responsible. As you can see, uh, they are looking at the long, long term, uh, great planning. So I thank you for the presentation. Um, I think we realized the significance and the importance of preparing for the future. So sometimes it's difficult for the public to understand. So I think, uh, they are also doing a good job, but I would imagine, uh, you know, there's always probably more need, especially in times of, uh, uh, budget constraining as we see occasionally. Um, especially maybe toward the future challenge. Perhaps we need to, do, think about doing more communication, explaining more about the financial structure and how wonderful the job, uh, the department is doing. Uh, I do have a question, uh, regard to the pipe water main breaks. Uh, do we have insurance coverage for these breaks and for the claims or are we self-insured?
We are self-insured.
Okay, now, we, it's part of the funding, financial management we all do.
Uh, so, uh, yeah, it's fine, uh, we contribute to the risk management fund and, and, uh, and, and that's how the claims are paid.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Great.
Pleasure what you do.
Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Nad and Linda, for the great presentation. Um, really quick question in terms of, um, where did the, maybe, did we have any indication that the pipes were leaking or going to fail at any point? And as we, as we lay new pipe, are we in any way instrumenting that pipe? So that we can have a better way to predict, maybe through sensors or other technology?
So, um, I'll take a stab at it and then I'm hoping that Linda will add to it. Um, some pipes, like the two examples we gave, actually, we had no indication. Uh, the West Lakes Mamish Parkway, it's unclear whether the hillside came down first and, and that's what brought the pipe down or the pipe broke first. Because once, once a pipe bursts, it's very hard to tell. And incidentally, the, the, there were, the hillside kind of collapsed at the same time. So, uh, there was no indication on that one. On the, on the second failure, uh, that second example of a water main, again, I, it, it was really the compression of the soil, uh, the peak, uh, which is, uh, which was unusual and not really expected in that, that stretch of pipe was not expected. But we do expect it to fail, but we do do, uh, acoustic testing and, and other diagnostics as Linda mentioned. Linda, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Um, so the, uh, the other, uh, elements that, uh, help us to, uh, predict the, uh, the possibility that pipes are going to fail, um, and you mentioned leaks. So, um, we do experience, uh, water leaks that are not complete failures. And if you see water bubbling up to the surface, uh, the main hasn't completely broken, uh, catastroph, catastrophically like we have in the smaller diameter AC mains. But sometimes with other types of pipe, um, you'll see a leak and that'll tell the crews something's going on there and they, and they excavate it out and find out that the pipe, um, is deteriorating. Uh, they're able to get in there proactively and, and make a repair before it really, uh, creates a flood. Um, so, so leaks, leak history and the, um, um, the locations of leaks, uh, in kind of one segment of pipe does, does give us an indication that, that that pipe is starting to fail and we can put that on a high priority list, list for replacement. Um, Nad mentioned also, um, acoustical testing. This is used for AC pipe mainly. And it's a way of using, um, sound waves to be able to predict, um, if the wall, the wall thickness of the pipe is getting narrower. And that's another way of being able to, um, indicate if a pipe might be getting close to failing, uh, even before, um, you know, we, we've experienced any kind of leaks happening. So the methods.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I was just curious if there was maybe even a more proactive way, if there is a way to, um, leverage any sort of sensors and things like that in the pipes as we install new pipes so that we have a better idea where there's a possibility of a leak in the meeting.
I think as we, as we do more smart water, um, investments, that is certainly something that we are looking at. Uh, water being a pressurized system, there, uh, that's a little bit more challenging than say sewer and storm, uh, pipes. But certainly, uh, that part of our vision for smart water is to look at sensor technology.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Um, I know a lot of the pipe issues we've been having are with the AC or asbestos cement pipes because there's, those tend to break more and we're replacing them with, is it ductile iron pipes? Okay, which have a much longer lifespan. How, where are we in the, um, scheme of things with how much AC pipe do we still have left in the city?
So we have about 240 miles of AC pipe left. And, um, uh, you know, we're, we're going at a rate of five miles a year. Uh, actually, just recently, we've, we've kind of hit our, our target of five miles a year. We've been ramping up over the last 10 years. So it's going to take us a while, probably about 50 years to replace all the AC main in the city. And, um, uh, that's about 40% of the total, um, pipe network.
Oh, okay. And so when it's replaced with the ductile iron, that has about 100 year lifespan, uh, is what I remember. So will we ever get to the point where we, all of our pipes are in good repair and we might be able to slow down?
In a century. With that, in 100 years.
In a century. Yeah, if there's 200, it's by my reckoning, it'll be, yeah, about 50 years before we get rid of all the AC, which, and that's the majority of the broken pipes, isn't it? The AC?
Well, tho, those are the, uh, the most vulnerable, kind of the, the, the oldest and the, uh, uh, the most prone to failure. Uh, but we also see some failures in, in the older ductile iron pipes and cast iron pipes as well. So that's why, you know, it's necessary to, um, do replacement for the whole system over the, the next 100 to 125 years.
Right. And I think it's, it's really important. I'm so glad Bellevue's doing this. One thing that I would ask, if it's not already there on the website, is that we have an explanation on the utilities page because a lot of people, um, on Nextdoor and other forums are asking about, you know, the, the, how high our water bills are and why they are, what they are. And R and R is one of the things that Bellevue does particularly well, where we are really planning for that 80-year lifespan in the future. And it's something I always try to explain to people, but it'd be great if we had a resource page, um, on our website that explained that so that people go, understand what they're paying for. Because I think it's really important that we have good systems. Thanks.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, very good, uh, presentation. I, I started off, uh, my first year on the council as liaison to the, uh, Environmental Services Commission and my first meeting, I was, was in a room with a bunch of engineers and, and, and Nad and all these charts. And it was amazing that, and that people don't, and, and as Councilmember Robertson was saying, people don't understand that it's a, it's a big job and a huge cost to keep the, the system in, in working order. Um, and, uh, by the same token, our, actually, our water rates are not, are very competitive. So that's, that's, uh, I think, uh, something very, we, we're very proud of. Um, it is, when you see that chart that shows all of the red lines up there, you're a little bit, it's, it's wonder, why can't we do something quicker on those? But it's the cost, right? When it comes down to it. I mean, it just seems like there's an awful lot of breaks, uh, comparatively. When you see the chart, it's, it's not as much when you get on the, on the field, but, uh,
Right.
Why, why can't we replace those pipes quicker?
Sooner. Uh, so it's, uh, it really is about money. And, and that's why we really focus a lot on asset management and look at the break history, the, and the condition of the pipe. And, and, uh, and we don't want to replace pipe too soon. And yet, uh, if you wait too long, then when a break happens, it will be too expensive. So that is the balance that we are working with, is what's that optimal point? And, and then funding is an issue. Uh, that's why, I mean, I think if funding wasn't an issue and if there was capacity for, to get more. for to get more done, ideal would be to get through your AC main quicker. But funding is an issue. And, and so that's why, by, we, we, with all the engineering analyses, landed on five miles a year. And, and, and we look at the most critical. And, and that generally is AC main to replace.
Yeah, I get questions sometimes from people wanting to know why, why we're having these main breaks and why don't we fix them before they break? And, and it's more complicated than that. I mean, this is pretty aggressive. And I guess part of the problem is people don't understand how vulnerable, in a way, these pipes are. And the land shifts, all kinds of things that cause this to happen. So overall, I think it's very positive. And I know some of the other cities around us are having, are looking at, in the future, some high, high costs because they're not able to keep up with the way we are. So again, that's, that's, that's very excellent. Good presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Nov, Linda, thanks for the great presentation. Great to see you, miss being the liaison to the Utilities Commission. You know, echoing some of the comments already made by my, by, by my colleagues. But utilities do such a fantastic job in this city. And what I appreciate most and what I learned quite a bit was about how important these water main replacement programs and other types of programs are to keep reinvesting, you know, in our infrastructure, in these assets. Because at the end of the day, it makes rates more predictable and we don't see those spikes. And there's been plenty of examples across the country where rates go up, you know, double or, or three times, five times. I mean, it's, it's, it's unbelievable how some cities do not take that Bellevue approach of constantly reinvesting in their infrastructure. And at the end of the day, it really is to the benefit of the, of the resident or the, the rate payer. So just want to say I really appreciate the thoughtful approach, the life cycle approach to, to this program. Clearly, the, the, the AC pipes are, are the, the pipes that are the ones that are breaking the most. I'm just curious, the two parts. Are they breaking more in one part of the city than, than another? So for example, Lake Hills example right there on, on Lake Hills Boulevard. Are there parts of the city or parts of certain neighborhoods where there's more of those pipes than there are in other parts of the cities? And then when you do see a break, do you tend to want to replace more of those AC pipes right around there? If it was an AC pipe that broke, since you're already in there doing the work, you try and replace even more? Or make that a priority once that happens?
So, again, let me start and Linda, please add to it. With the AC main, what we find is that the small diameter pipe, the four-inch, six-inch, is what fails more catastrophically. And that's where we're seeing most of the failures. And as you saw with that map, sorry, again, I apologize about the slideshow, but the map of the breaks, you can see that they're all over.
Yeah.
They're literally all over the city. And, and so we have AC main. It's not, it's not any particular area that has, you know, concentration of AC main. But the size, the small diameter pipe is the one that's most vulnerable. So our strategy, our strategy is to start with four-inch. And we, I think, have nearly, we're almost finished with replacing that. And then there was a probably correct me on that. And then, then we'll go to six-inch. And as far as if we're in the vicinity, it, it's really kind of a calculated guess. We, we look at acoustic testing in that area and on larger diameter. And if we see that the other AC pipes in that area are also not doing well, then we will do it at that time. But again, we don't want to leave shelf life. Like, we don't want to replace something that could easily have another 25 years' life. Because that's too expensive for our customers. So that's why we take a look at it in the moment. And, and the acoustic testing actually has been very helpful in that. Because that actually happened in Innes Glen, Glen area, where we were going in to replace four-inch main. And, and there was a, a stretch of eight-inch AC pipe. And, and that was not scheduled to be replaced because that, we've got a whole lot of other high priority pipes to replace. But when we did acoustic testing on that, we found that it hardly had any damage, any thickness left. And so that was a total surprise to us, that it should, but it, that, that technology helped us to say, no, we are here now. It's less costly to replace that right now. We wouldn't have even known it without these tools.
Right.
Linda, did you want to add anything?
I think you covered it pretty well, Nov. The only thing I would add is that we're also using information that we get from the field crews. So they, they keep good track of the break history in a certain neighborhood or even on the same street. And so that, that break history really helps us also to know, you know, the pipe is, is really deteriorating in this whole stretch. And that helps us to decide to put it on a priority list for replacing for, you know, several blocks at a time rather than just that, that particular spot that broke.
Indeed. Well, thank you so much. And like you said, Nov, we are in good shape moving forward. And certainly, the high-quality drinking water for a penny a gallon is, 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 is pretty good. So there's some pretty good ROI there. So I appreciate the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sun.
Yes, thank you for the very thorough presentation. I echo the comments from my colleagues. You know, to me, prudent, smart asset planning and management is so key. Because infrastructure is essential, right? Or access to clean drinking water, the public safety aspect of this. And so I appreciate all of the work that you're doing. Because my sense is that some of the vulnerability might come from the fact that we are seeing much more, more impactful weather events. So as I think about the stability of the pipes and stormwater and soil erosion, it could lead to even more acceleration of some of these areas. And I appreciate your comment about keeping good as-built records. Because my sense is that that will go a long ways to making sure that we know what's out there. My, my question is, I, I thought I remembered that Lake Sammish, when we were doing the, the bike trail up there, that we were also taking advantage of the roadway project or the project being there to actually do a replacement. So can you comment on that? Because I believe that that is one of the practices you have is, if we're in the area already, then let's make sure we're looking at all of the infrastructure instead of digging something up and then coming back and digging it up later.
Absolutely, absolutely. Linda, would you like to take that?
Sure, sure. So that's absolutely true. In fact, that project is in full swing right now. We partnered with transportation and they're doing roadway and bikeway work. We actually delayed our project and they accelerated theirs in order to try to get our schedules to work together. We're, we're replacing many, many blocks of AC main. And in fact, in this particular area, because that stretch of Westlake Sammish Parkway does have poor soils, we are not only replacing the older AC main pipe, but we're replacing it with earthquake-resistant pipe in order to really strengthen it and make it less vulnerable to, to an earthquake. So that is something that's included in that, in that work. And again, it's a joint project between transportation and utilities. So that's a good example of partnership and making sure that we get all that work done while, before the roadway is, is paved over.
Yeah, well, great. Thank you very much for your amazing work and I appreciate it.
Thank you. So I'm wondering, I hate to hassle you with this, but if you could go back to one of the last bar graphs that you had in the presentation, is that possible?
I'm getting there now.
Okay.
Let me see if I can.
I've got it up.
There we go.
Is this the one with the red and blue bars?
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
So I'd like you to talk a little bit about the impacts of COVID on 2020.
Hmm, okay. On our construction's schedule?
On your revenues and on, on the, so I mean, I, I know, I'm just wondering. I know the city has not collected as much business tax due to COVID. And I'm wondering if there's been any less collection of, of fees due to COVID in your, in your budget as well?
There have been. We, we are seeing, we will have a shortfall of about $8 million, I think, in 2020. And, and the way we are dealing with that is cost containment, delaying projects and not filling open positions. So we've had a multi-pronged approach for, ever since March, basically. We, we knew it was coming because when, when the businesses are closed in, in the city, then they're, they're not using. And it's the commercial revenues that we're seeing down. The residential revenues are slightly up, but the two are not offsetting each other. So we, we saw it coming, we prepared for it right then. And, and it's a multi-pronged, like I said, approach, use of reserves for one time, kind of, because the, it's hard to predict how the overall, the impact of COVID. We, we've seen it up to now, but then we're looking at 21, 22 even, the impact of lingering effect of businesses not coming back to, you know, back in Bellevue. And, and what pace would they come, would, would they come back? So we are taking a very measured approach. Use of one-time revenues or reserves, cost containment and, and holding back on some studies, engineering studies, as well as not filling vacant positions.
Well, I want to just thank you for your nimbleness because it seems like the investments really pay off that you make and the water main replacements are going to save you money in, in the long run, even though they cost a lot to replace. So I, it's got to be really hard to juggle all the competing needs right now. And I just want to thank you for doing that so effectively.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our next item, which is Arts Audience Participation Survey. Mr. Miyake.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Councilmember. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to report out on the recent Arts Audience Participation Survey. And just by way of background, as part of the city's response to COVID, staff led work with Eastside Partners to survey arts audiences' perceptions and experiences since the pandemic began. The community survey looked at participant demographics, desired safety measures and opportunities for alternative models of presentation. The report will be used to help develop strategies and tools to support our arts organization's sustainability. So joining us tonight is Jesse Canador, Chief Economic Development Officer, along with Scott McDonald, the Arts Community Manager, to make this presentation. And this is for an informational overview for the council. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Jesse.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmembers, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, we are very looking forward to tonight's presentation and discussion. During the last few council sessions on economic development, the arts has come up as a point of interest and concern for the council. So therefore, it was very timely that we were finalizing the report that is included in tonight's packet and that we will be discussing with council tonight. Next slide, please. As the city manager mentioned, tonight is for information only. And the discussion or the presentation will cover our efforts to help Bellevue and the Eastside's arts and cultural communities learn to adapt to the pandemic. There are two big themes this evening. Arts and cultural activities, with the first one being the arts and cultural activities, which tie in directly to residents' livability, attractiveness to businesses and their employees, and how strong extratourism are facing some significant headwinds. And Scott will get into those in detail. But also, the second big theme will be that Bellevue continues to be a regional leader in the arts. And the city and our partners are working very hard to live into Bellevue's spirit of innovation and focus on the future as we look at arts and cultural activities for 2021 beyond. Next slide, please. So for tonight's agenda, Scott will give you the background on how we came to, to the, the idea of putting out the survey. He'll give you some detail on the, the survey itself, including some interesting diversity statistics and some work that we did to make sure that the survey was representative of all parts of our community. We'll cover the major takeaways, some of the opportunities and the next steps, again, as we look forward to 21 and beyond. And with that, I will hand it over to Scott.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council for having us here tonight. As we all know, the pandemic has hit the arts especially hard. In-person events, which are really the lifeblood of most artists and arts organizations, have stopped. And these are things like dance performances, theater, cultural festivals, museum openings. And especially important to Bellevue's, where many of Bellevue's organizations are the educational programs that they offer. Now, some organizations have been able to transition to online programming, but many haven't been able to. And to better understand that, the reasons behind that, and also just financial impacts, organizational challenges, specific challenges with unique audiences that organizations have. Staff met with over 25 organizations early on in the pandemic in one-on-one listening sessions. And from those, we learned that there is really no single solution and that each, each organization faces its own unique problems. These are things like cash flow, whether they have a performing arts focus or not, available technical expertise, and a long list of others. We also heard that many of these organizations have limited tools to be able to deal with the pandemic. Now, we always want to make data-driven decisions. So we looked across major state and local surveys on impacts to the arts during the pandemic and found that they were all focused on financial impacts to artists and arts organizations. So the audience that they were, they were specifically surveying were the artists and arts organizations themselves. We saw that there was an opportunity to take a customer-focused approach by looking for solutions from the audience's perspective as a way to help those same artisan organizations. So it's a little bit different look at the problem. So we, we came up with the idea of a, a survey called the, the Arts Audience Participation Survey. We, we saw it as an opportunity for Bellevue to lead an effort that could not just help lift the organizations that work in Bellevue, but across the, the East Side as part of the great, greater arts community. To craft the survey, we worked with a long list of arts organizations, including individual organizations and then also organizations that were, that are affiliated with the Eastside Arts and Culture Coalition. And then we also worked with the cities of Isiqua, Kirkland, Redmond and Renton to both craft the survey and help us get word out to their communities. Through this partnership approach, the survey received 1,074 responses across seven of the eight languages that it was offered in. Diversity is our strength and we, we knew that we needed to come up with an effective strategy that would, would bring the survey from, to, to the widest possible cross-section of the community. And I think one reason that the, the survey was particularly successful in getting such a high response was that we specifically targeted working with arts organizations who then could serve as a community liaison to their own networks. And as an example, in a conversation with the organization that runs Japan Fair, we, after talking with them and then pushing it out to their network, within two to three days, we saw a large spike in the use of the Japanese translation of the survey. We also met with diverse arts, diverse groups to ask what languages they wanted the survey in. And, and this was really about trying to be welcome, welcoming and to go to, go to these groups, go to them rather than asking them to come to us. One example, one thing we learned from this is we were originally going to offer the survey in Russian and we still did. But in talking to an organization that offered a Ukrainian cultural festival, we heard that, that many of their, many of the people in their community would feel uncomfortable being asked to fill out a survey in Russian when there was a conflict ongoing between Ukraine and Russia. So we, we brought in a Ukrainian translation into the survey and got good use, usage of that. We also did targeted outreach to diverse groups and as well as resources, listservs that the city had. And then pushed it out through typical channels that the city. And then pushed it out through, uh, typical channels that the city, um, employs for a lot of different efforts. Um. So, uh, we learned a lot. Uh, this is obviously just the first step, but we did learn a lot. So one thing that shouldn't be a huge surprise to everyone on, uh, in this meeting. Is that arts on the east side don't stop at individual cities' borders. The story was really, this story was really the same across the east side where you had more people attending events in a given city. Compared to the percent that took the survey that lived there. So as an example of that, Woodinville residents were. One point seven percent of the total survey respondents, but eighteen percent of all respondents attended events. In Woodinville roughly ten times. Uh, Bellevue led all cities with residents making up thirty-eight percent of all respondents. But eighty-two percent of the a thousand seventy-four people that took the survey regularly attended art events and experiences in Bellevue. This demonstrates that Bellevue is clearly the arts and cultural heart of the east side. And I think it's also important to note that, uh, Bellevue beat Seattle as a destination for arts, cultural and educational experiences. Um, thinking more broadly about what that means. Um, we pulled out this, uh, statistic from the survey. So fifty-five percent of the respondents attended events weekly or monthly. When you factor in ancillary spending associated with art events. And Bellevue's leadership as an arts destination, this translates into real dollars for Bellevue over the course of a norm, normal year. One thing about the survey that was particularly meaningful, uh, for me was that. It gave the community an opportunity to, uh, share their, write in their experiences. Uh, specific to either the loss of the arts or how the arts had helped them or impacted them. Uh, during the pandemic. And what we heard was that there was a lot of sadness around the loss for the arts. People expressed, uh, feeling a void in their lives, uh, feelings of loss and depression. Loss of creativity in themselves and their kids, loss of connection with their communities. And also a loss of income and employment as artists and arts professionals working on the east side. There was also, uh, deep gratitude, uh, for the arts that have been able to continue in some fashion, uh, virtually or otherwise. And many talked about how the arts have been a lifeline in an otherwise hard year. So what do we know now that can help us and the east side arts community plan for the future? Organizations should expect a protracted return. It's striking that fifty-seven percent of, of respondents to the survey wanted to see a readily available vaccine. Before feeling comfortable returning to in-person events. What does that mean? That means that particularly performing arts organizations shouldn't, should be planning for less than a hundred. Hundred percent capacity well beyond when the governor says it's okay to return to a hundred percent capacity. And in fact, that not only do we need to see a vaccine on the market. There's also a perception that needs to be widespread within the community that it is both readily available and widely used. We also know that a lot of people are attending virtual events, but only thirty-seven percent have paid for them. And there was a lot of interest in moving events outdoors as long as social distancing was employed. We see this as leading to real tools. And as we mentioned, it is the first step. Uh, this is just, uh. This has brought up just a suite of tools among many that we'll need to employ. Um, from the results, we see that there's an opportu- opportunity for organizations to right-size fees for virtual events. Market their access benefits. Um, like you don't need to pay for a sitter for your kids. There are no toll fees or parking fees. Um, maybe you feel uncomfortable because you don't have the right clothes or look like the other audience members. Uh, which can all be barriers for participation. This is not to say obviously that there aren't access issues for virtual events created by socioeconomic conditions. But we did, and we did hear from some respondents that do have technological barriers. And specifically many, uh, a small number, not, not many of the respondents listed this. But many families only have one computer to share. And that can be difficult for, uh, attending events or scheduling. Um, we also, for arts organizations, we see that there's an opportunity to market their events across the region and country. And in our conversations with arts organizations, we've heard that many organizations have seen three times or more. The views of virtual performances than if those same performances were in person. And on the city side, uh, the city could work to remove barriers like we did with the old Bellevue on-street dining, uh, program. We could look for opportunities to cross-market, uh, across the east side. Uh, work for east side, work with east side cities to develop regional solutions and match resources. And then of course, continue to support the arts and the community through our arts grants program. So what do we do now? Uh, we obviously need to look at our own house and, uh, so we're looking at our own programming. Uh, Bellweather, which will be coming to the council in November as an, as part of a, an update. Um, has been altered, uh, to, to live on within the COVID era and still keep people safe. Um, we are also working with organizations to talk through the findings and help distribute them. So this, this is really entailing si- sitting down with organizations or virtually sitting down with organizations. And, um, making sure that they understand what we heard from the community and, and seeing how, how they can work to help themselves and how we can support that. Um, the survey is also informing how we develop future solutions and programs to help artists and organizations. And I think it's also worth noting, um, uh, because it is ongoing currently that, uh, artists and organization and cultural nonprofits. Are, um, the COVID recovery grants via the CARES Act funding. Would, uh, is open to arts and cultural nonprofits as well as businesses. So there's, uh, other means of support coming from the city as well as, um. Uh, strategies that we're not, um, getting into today. And lastly, um, we plan to work with our partners and the community. On a follow-up survey that will assess changing needs and perceptions among arts audiences as the, um. The goalposts of the pandemic seemingly continue to shift. So with that, I want to thank you and happy to take questions and comments from the com- commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Really good. And it, um, there's a good memo in our packet. I'm wondering if the council would indulge me in saying that. If you have comments or questions, you could email staff on this so that we can move forward with our agenda. Because we have such a packed agenda tonight. So, um, Councilmember Stokes is the liaison to the Arts Commission. Are you comfortable with us doing that?
Yeah, Liz, fine. Uh, very good presentation. Maybe we'll take a little time to digest it and, and send any questions or comments you have. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, that presentation. Okay, um, I know this is a long meeting. We have a lot of material. If you need to, um, take a break to stretch or whatever, feel free to do that because I know you can stand up and listen at the same time. Um, okay, so we have, um, other ordinances, resolutions and motions right now. And Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce ordinance, um, sixty-five thirty?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, um, ordinance sixty-five thirty imposes an interim official control. Tolling time limitations for certain active temporary use permits and amending the restrictions for application of certain successive temporary use permits. And just by way of background, the interim official control is intended to quickly respond to provide relief for applicants for. For and holders of temporary use permits. Uh, relying on these permits to operate businesses and services during the COVID nineteen pandemic and Safe Start of Washington. Um, we are looking for adoption, uh, action on whether or not to adopt this ordinance. And joining us this evening is Liz Sted, the Land Use Director and Trisna Tanis Consulting Attorney, both from the Development Services Department. With that, I'll hand it over to Liz.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Uh, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newland House and councilmembers, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, Trisna Tanis is actually going to begin our presentation this evening and then I'll chime in about halfway through. So I'll pass it to Trisna.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, um, Councilmember, City Manager Miyake. Thank you so much. I'm gonna see, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, um, I don't know if it's on. Slideshow or not. There we go. Okay, so thank you again for having us this evening. We are here to present an interim official control related to temporary use permits. Specifically to, um, enable extending these permits until the completion of Safe Start Washington. So as, uh, City Manager Miyake mentioned, we are asking council to adopt the interim official control ordinance, um, at the end of this meeting. Um, so that, the agenda tonight, we're gonna just briefly go through what is a temporary use permit. Um, talk through, uh, kind of the COVID-related permits that we are seeing. We're gonna speak about the objectives of the interim official control and talk about the components of the, the ordinance. And then go back to, um, asking from, uh, council, uh, direction and hopefully, um, adoption of this interim official control. So what is a temporary use permit? Um, it is a permit that allows and, uh, a use on an interim basis. Um, and the city would not require the use to be in full compliance of the, with the land use code. The permit, um, could be for private property or public right-of-way. It would be valid for ninety days. And there would be a restriction on, of thirty days between successive permits. So with COVID and, um, Safe Start Washington, we are of course in the middle of the COVID nineteen pandemic. In May, Governor Inslee, in collaboration with the Washington State Department of Health, put in place a four-phase reopening plan called Safe Start Washington. This plan would modify, um, physical distancing measures based on a county-by-county data. And on June nineteenth, King County moved to Safe Start Phase Two. However, on July twenty-eighth, there was a pause on all reopening phases due to the continued, um, rise in cases. So businesses and services must continue then to limit their activities and follow distancing other and other requirements. What we're seeing in Bellevue is that, um, businesses and services are utilizing, uh, temporary use permits to expand their areas to add capacity. So, um, and this is of course while following distancing requirements. As I'm sure you've all seen, there are restaurants, um, that provide outdoor dining in parking lots. Um, retail stores are placing merchandise and accommodating shopping in outdoor spaces. And entertainment companies such as drive-in movies are happening in parking lots. We're also receiving inquiries from educational providers wanting to bring in portable structures. Um, so they, they can use those as classrooms, again, to, to minimize the number that they would have. Um, also for healthcare companies to provide drive-in or drive-through medical services. So, um, these providers need this interim official control so that they are assured that they can operate in this manner. Certainly before investing and mobilizing these temporary measures. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Ms. Sted to go through the rest of our presentation to you.
Thank you. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what the objectives of the IOC are. The first objective is actually responding to all the positive feedback we've gotten from the community, both, uh, citizens that live in the community. Also the business owners to the temporary use permit process and how we've been able to use that in the past, uh, six months. We also wanted to really quickly mitigate these continuing impacts. It just keeps going. And so we want to give business owners an opportunity to continue to provide services to the community. And being able to continue to rely on the temporary use will actually allow those increased capacities to go on. We also want to allow applications for successive permits and I'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, in the next slide. And then be able to, as Ms. Tanis mentioned, expand temporary uses as needed for social distancing. Can you have the next slide, please? The components of the IOC are twofold. The first one is the tolling of the time limitation. The temporary use permit in the land use code currently allows for a maximum of ninety days for any temporary use permit. We've realized that in this time of COVID, ninety days really isn't sufficient to get us through. I wish it were, but it isn't. So what we are trying to do is to actually stop the clock. So we would not start timing any of these, uh, permits that we issue until the end of the Safe Start Washington, the last phase. So once that is lifted, the, the clock would begin to toll again at that point. We also went ahead and are looking to remove the requirement for a thirty-day break between temporary permits. As code currently will allow us to issue one temporary use permit for ninety days. Then it requires that the applicant take a break for thirty days. And then they could come back and apply for one more temporary use permit within the year. So this, uh, IOC is proposing to remove that thirty days. Next slide. The decision criteria that we look at for a temporary use permit is, uh, on the screen. But we're really looking at what is the public health, safety, welfare, are there injuries that could be caused through this use? Is it compatible in intensity and appearance with existing land uses in the immediate vicinity? We also want to look at their adequate parking for the temporary use. And we do require that they specify hours of operation and we find that especially important for uses such as a restaurant. That has an outdoor patio. We don't want it to be, you know, going on at eleven o'clock at night when people are trying to sleep potentially nearby. We also said, and that ties into the last decision criterion, which is that it must not cause adverse noise, light or glare on surrounding uses. Next slide. The outcomes that we're looking for really from this IOC is to enable the current businesses to operate within approved conditions. So we have businesses that have taken advantage of this temporary use permit. They have their conditions of approval and we want to be able to keep them moving forward with those, uh, with those, uh, conditions. We do have some plans, uh, to actually reach out to those existing permit holders and let them know that if this is passed, there is an extension of time. And also to go ahead and streamline reapply, reapplications for those folks that may have had a temporary use permit that has expired. So we will streamline that. And we also want to bring people back into the fold if they're making any revisions to their temporary use permit. So as the seasons change, we start to pe- see people want to put up a tent where maybe they just had outdoor seating previously. Or maybe they want to put a heater in. So we want them to come back in so we can make sure that all the life safety issues are reviewed on those. Next slide. We do, will require a public hearing as, uh, all of the IOCs. There is a requirement that we have a public hearing within sixty, sixty days of enactment of the IOC. So if council chooses to enact that tonight, we would go ahead and start scheduling out that public hearing within the next sixty days. And we also do have the oppor- opportunity to extend an IOC for one or more six-month periods. So again, we would need to have another public hearing. Now it's, you know, my wish, I hope that we aren't doing it for one or more six-month periods. But, uh, not knowing how the, how the COVID will move, we don't know, but we do have that option if, if need be. Like, the direction we need from council, as, uh, City Manager Miyake noted, was, uh, whether. You're in accordance to adopt the interim official control ordinance. And that's our presentation for this evening and both Ms. Tanis and I are available for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So I'm gonna go and look at you. Because I don't think everybody's gonna have a question or comment on every single ordinance. And to get through these as quickly as possible, let's save our questions and comments for the things you really care about here. So, um, can you raise your hand if you have a question or comment on this ordinance? I see Councilmember Lee. Um, and that's it. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Uh, is IOC, is IOC good for a period of six months? Only?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's a caveat. I think this is good because, uh, definitely we have to respond to the need of the businesses. And I mean, what's, you know, happening that is negative impacting the community. and, I mean, what's, you know, happening that is negatively impacting the community. But I also want to have a couple of caveats, just to get some feedback from you. One is certain things that people, especially in places, business near neighborhoods. People are willing to put up with some of the inconveniences, or, you know, maybe it's more than just inconvenience, depending on how the people perceive that. But normally, that's not permitted, obviously. But because there's a COVID-19 people, I was sure, you know, we can live with it. So I want to be sure that we don't take advantage of the goodwill of the people because of COVID and becomes a situation that it could be abused, right? And so is there a way to make sure that we have some sensible precaution that, you know, the neighborhood people, people who may find it objectionable, have an opportunity to give us information, and we have the opportunity to have, you know, communication, understanding, discussion that, hey, maybe, you know, we need to do something different to accommodate everybody.
I think that's a really good point, Councilmember.
That's my question.
Yeah, thank you. I believe that's a really good point.
Is that answer?
She's trying to answer.
Yeah. So thank you for the question. We do have conditions that we put on to these approvals. One of the conditions that I mentioned was time-related. So especially if a use is near a neighborhood, near a residential building. We do actually restrict the time for outside seating. We do also have a mechanism if the owners of the business are not working within those boundaries that we've put up, that we can go through our code enforcement policy or process to actually take away that use permit that they've been given. So we do try and look at those items, and we have, I think, some good understanding of a lot of our neighborhoods and what they, you know, what they are concerned about. We have not seen any applications to date in, like, for example, a single-family neighborhood. They've all relocated in more commercial areas.
As we always say, the council always do, you know, that communication is important, right? When you have situations like this, that might be understanding contention, communication between all parties. Thank you. Well done. Good job.
Councilmember Zahn, did you have a question or comment?
Just one quick comment, that as you look at streamlining the, the extensions, I think we also want to make sure that we look at those things that actually make sense to do and adopt more holistically, so not just during this time period, but if there are some streamlining that makes sense, we should be looking at that in our processes, being more efficient and effective. Thanks.
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. No, I think this is great. I wanted to thank staff for bringing this forward. The council has, I think, made it really clear that we want to support our businesses. It's a hard time this year, and this is exactly one of those things that can help. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Lee for always looking out for the neighborhoods. What I would ask is when this comes back for the 60-day hearing, if we have had any complaints or issues, can you please make sure the council is aware of them so that we know if, how well it's working? But I think this is a great idea, and I really want to support it. If there's no other comments, I'm happy to make the motion.
Um, yeah, I was gonna, let's let Deputy Mayor make it, just because he's got it kind of to work from. So Deputy Mayor, are you ready to make a motion?
Oh, certainly. I move to adopt ordinance 6530, imposing an interim official control, tolling time limitations for certain active temporary use permits, and suspending the restriction for application of certain successive temporary use permits.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on. We have ordinance 6531, Mr. Miyaki.
Yes, Mayor, we're gonna go a little bit in hyper mode here, cover six ordinances at one time, items 12B through G, which are ordinances 6531, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36, which are on your agenda this evening. And what they do is they cover the building and fire code updates as required by state law and incorporation of the abatement of dangerous building codes and Uniform Housing Code amendments as two chapters in the Bellevue City Code. And just by way of background, the state law requires these updates as part of the construction codes on a periodic basis. This matter was last before you, around September 21st, at a study session. Tonight, staff is seeking approval of six ordinances, amending the Bellevue Construction Code and incorporating the abatement of dangerous building codes and Uniform Housing Code, excuse me, as new chapters in the Bellevue City Code. With that, we have joining us Mike Brennan, the Director of the Development Services Department, Greg Schrader, the Building Official, Trisna Tanis Consulting Attorney, Kevin Carrollon, our Acting Fire Marshal, and Jay Haagen-Cheek, the Fire Department. With that, I'll go ahead and just turn over to Mike Brennan to kick off a brief presentation and answer questions before you take each one of these ordinance under consideration and for a vote. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newland House, and members of the City Council. I have a short present, or we have a short presentation, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, to discuss the adoption of the updated building and fire codes. This topic was last before you and your September 21st study session. Tonight, we are seeking council action to adopt the updated building and fire codes, which will keep Bellevue's codes consistent with the minimum codes required in the state. Next slide, please. Tonight, we will briefly cover the codes that are proposed for adoption, the implementation dates. There are two phases to the proposed adoption, and we'll explain that in a little more detail in just a few minutes. A listing of the ordinances that are up for adoption, the six ordinances that Mr. Miyaki mentioned. And then again, we'll end for, with a request for council action on each of those ordinances. Next slide, please. So Mr. Schrader will, the building official will kind of walk through the codes that are being updated through this process. Greg?
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So this is the list of technical codes that Mike mentioned are developed at the national level. Then the state adopts and amends these. And under state law, each local city and county is required to enforce these. Next, please. Mike mentioned the phased implementation. So Phase One is really driven by the mandate for the National Electrical Code to be effective October 29th. And I apologize, we actually have the wrong date on the, it's the 2020 National Electrical Code. But along with that, we have some amendments to the fire and building codes that we are proposing for that same effective date as part of Phase One. And then Phase Two would be the normal building and fire code implementation effective February 1st. Next, please. Here's the list of proposed ordinances. Hopefully, that provides some clarity. Phase One and Phase Two, I talked just a moment ago about each of those. And I'll ask Acting Fire Marshal Kevin Carrollon to comment on this slide.
Good evening. You may remember last month, Ken Carlson presented some changes, significant changes to the fire code, including mobile fueling, and we received a few comments on that. You may remember, mobile fueling is, is a pretty new industry where people have the ability to order gasoline service delivered to their car wherever they had parked it. And there's obviously some codes connected to that. And if you're curious, like I was, you do have to unlock your gas cap before you leave the car. We have prepared an amendment that would prohibit mobile fueling at the request of Councilmember Robertson for consideration when adopting the 2018 International Fire Code.
Next slide, please. So that is the completion of a, like we said, very brief presentation. We are certainly available to answer any additional questions that council members may have.
Um, thank you. So should we dive into Councilmember Robertson's comment on the fuel program, the refueling, mobile refueling program? Just to hear what, what, well, I was wondering if we could just get an idea of the proposed amendment before we have any discussion. Do you have it written down?
So the proposed amendment would prohibit the mobile fueling except for emergencies like roadside AAA or personal use.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's get a motion just to even discuss this, to start off with.
Eric, do you want to start with, just to go in order with ordinance 6531 first, before we get to the 6532, which is the one that would deal with the issue of the mobile fueling?
Yeah, I would. I, the way it was presented, I wasn't sure if we could do it individually, if we had to approve them all together, but I would prefer to do them individually. Mr. Miyaki, is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, let's start with 6531.
Okay. And your patience, this is a bit of a long one here, but ordinance 6531, I move to adopt ordinance 6531, amending the Bellevue City Code to adopt certain state building code updates and local amendments thereto, amending Chapter 23.05 relating to construction code administration, repealing Chapter 2310 in its entirety and replacing with a new Chapter 2310 reflecting amendments to state building codes, repealing Chapter 23.12 in its entirety and replacing with a new Chapter 23.12 reflecting amendments to state residential codes, amending Chapter 23.13 to reflect amendments to the state existing building code, amending Chapter 23.16 to reflect amendments to swimming pool enclosures, repealing Chapter 23.50 in its entirety and replacing with a new Chapter 23.50 reflecting amendments to state mechanical and related codes, amending Chapter 23.60 reflecting amendments to state plumbing codes, and amending Chapter 23.85 reflecting amendments to state building codes.
Second.
Okay, so now we can have a discussion. So would you?
I should, go ahead.
Okay, so would you like to indicate whether you have a comment or a question on this, anybody? All right. I'm not seeing any. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we've adopted ordinance 6531 as written. So let's move on to ordinance 6532.
I move to adopt ordinance 6532, repealing Chapter 23.11 of the Bellevue City Code and adopting a new Chapter 23.11 of the Bellevue City Code in order to adopt the 2018 International Fire Code with amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna open this up for discussion. I know that Councilmember Robertson has an idea on this, but probably believe there are other comments or questions as well. So who all would like to speak on this? All right. I have to go screen to screen, so, okay, Councilmember Zahn as well. Okay, so Councilmember Zahn, why don't you just start with your comment or question?
Well, my comment is I really appreciate the amendment from Councilmember Robertson, because when this came before the council, I raised.
Hold on, Councilmember Zahn, let's reverse this. Let's have Councilmember Robertson introduce her amendment, and then you can speak to it.
Either, either way is fine with me. Thank you. So yeah, when I, the reason I asked staff to prepare an amendment, and it's in the packet just next to the agenda bill, to ban the mobile fueling is because it seemed like there were several council members, not just me, who were concerned about the potential of this new business model. People bringing gasoline to, you know, to the city and filling gas tanks all around the city, not at a gas station. And I know that under the draft language of the permit, the, they would have to get permission. There's a lot of requirements in there. But as we all know, no matter how careful you are, gasoline often is spill, spills when you fill your tank, and which is why many gas stations are, need environmental remediation. And since we have, you know, we really work hard in Bellevue to have clean stormwater, and having gas dispensed all over the city could lead to gas being spilled and dirty, dirtier stormwater, which does eventually get into the lakes, and it also gets into the streams where we're trying to bring back our fish and, you know, fish and salmon habitat and other things. And so I just felt like it's, it's, since other people were concerned and I was concerned, this is one of those ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. The presentation we had said we didn't see it happening, we wouldn't necessarily have a business coming to do this. But if that's the case, then there's no problem in banning it. And I, and we certainly will be updating our fire code again in three more years. And so if there's a need and it's done in a safe way in other places, we can reverse it at that time when we not have that individual local amendment. So I would like to hear from my colleagues if we want to make, move this forward, or I can just put the amendment.
What I'd like, I'd like to hear a motion for the amendment, and then we'll have a discussion of it, please.
I'm happy to do it that way. I just, I wanted to make this an opportunity for other people feel the way I do. So I would move to amend ordinance 6532 with the amendment number one, as stated in the packet, which bans mobile fueling except for emergency purposes, mobile automobile and vehicle fueling in Bellevue.
Second. Second.
Okay, Councilmember Zahn, would you like to comment on that? So sorry about being confusing here.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to appreciate Councilmember Robertson working with staff on the amendment, because when it came before us, you know, I was very concerned about how spill containment would actually happen to protect our stormwater. And so hearing that there were not currently any businesses doing this in Bellevue, I have no issues with the ban, and in fact, it makes sense, because we're actually trying to move to a more electrified fleets anyway within our own. And so this makes absolute sense to me. Thank you.
Any other comments on this?
Yes. Yes, Madam Mayor, I second the motion. I like to say it worked. Okay, I strongly support Councilmember, yes?
I, I know there's a delay. It's awkward. I'm sorry. I just wanted to see, are there any other hands as well of people who want to comment or question? Okay, so go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. As I said, I second the motion because I strongly support Councilmember Janet Robertson's motion. I believe that, you know, this is something, she articulated very well. I don't need to add anymore. It's for all those reasons, and it's a dangerous thing when we have dangerous, like, ammo fluid. You don't know who else will be handling it everywhere. It's, it's not something that's just for, for play. So I strongly support that, and I think whether, even if this other business that might be thinking about it, I think it's not a good practice, so I would not condone, you know. So I would support strongly Councilmember Robertson's motion. Thank you.
Let's vote on the, on her amendment to the motion. Is there, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So now we have that amended. So we can vote. Are there any, are there any more comments or questions on the entire ordinance 6532?
As amended.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific. Thank you. We are on to 6533.
I move to adopt ordinance 6533, amending Chapter 23.10 to adopt building code local amendments, amending the Bellevue City Code, Chapter 23.30 to adopt certain state electrical code updates and local amendments thereto.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. All right. Deputy Mayor, 6534.
I move to adopt ordinance 6534, amending ordinance 6292 and Chapter 23.11 of the City of Bellevue Fire Code, repealing and replacement Sections 23.11.113 and 23.11.510, repealing Section 23.11.917, and adding new sections 23.11, 607.9, and 23.11.919.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are on F. Deputy Mayor, 6535.
I move to adopt ordinance 6535, amending the Bellevue City Code to incorporate the Uniform Housing Code with conformance and consistency amendments as Chapter 23.22 and the Bellevue City Code.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. And then the last one in this batch, Deputy Mayor, 6536.
I move to adopt ordinance 6536, amending the Bellevue City Code to incorporate the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Building Codes and Uniform Housing Code. I move to adopt ordinance sixty-five thirty-six amending the Bellevue City Code to incorporate the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings with Conformance and Consistency Amendments as chapter twenty-three dot two-zero and the Bellevue City Code.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this one? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes as well. So now we are on to other ordinances resolutions and am I right about that? Nope, I skipped a page, sorry. I'm on page six.
Sixty-five thirty-seven.
Yep, sixty-five thirty-seven.
Sixty-five thirty-seven, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move to adopt ordinance sixty-five thirty-seven authorizing execution of an amendment to the interagency agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce to accept two million one hundred seventy-nine five hundred in additional coronavirus aid relief and economic security act funding for costs incurred due to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency amending the twenty-nineteen twenty-twenty operating grants and donations fund to increase the appropriation by two million one hundred seventy-nine five hundred amending the two thousand nineteen twenty, twenty-twenty human services fund to increase the appropriation by one million and authorizing the use of CARES Act funding.
So is there a second?
Shouldn't there be one million seventy-nine five hundred?
One million seventy-nine five hundred.
Mayor, if I may, this is the clerk. I believe there was a staff presentation on this one.
There will be. We're doing it in a different order. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, so let's pause and take, get our staff presentation, and then we can have questions and comments.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna have our presentation. Joining us this evening is Tony Esparza from our Parks Department as, as well as Jesse Canado of Economic Development as a team, and I'll turn it over to them for a brief staff presentation.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. As discussed, we're here to, to review with you additional CARES funding that has been allocated to the City of Bellevue. Let me share my screen with you. Is that working okay for everyone?
Yes.
Great.
We are having some problems audio.
Audio, okay, is that a little better, Councilmember Lee?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Thank you for letting me know. Tonight, we are seeking direction on an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the interagency agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce to accept two million one hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars in additional CARES funding amending the two thousand nineteen to twenty-twenty operating costs and donations fund to increase the appropriation by that same amount amending the two thousand nineteen to twenty-twenty Human Services Fund to increase the appropriation by one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the uses we will discuss this evening of the CARES Act funding. A little background is that on September the first, twenty-twenty, the State of Washington announced several amendments to the coronavirus relief fund. This resulted in an extension of the end date of the contract to November the thirtieth and an increased allocation to the City of Bellevue, again, of two million one hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Tonight, we are here to present recommendations for the acceptance and allocation of this additional CARES funding. Our recommendations include six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for city operational costs for public health, public safety, and administrative costs incurred to respond to and mitigate the impacts of COVID-nineteen forecasted through November the thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for cultural and economic development and one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred for human services. And with that, I will pass it over to Jesse Canado, the City of Bellevue Chief Economic Development Officer, who is here to share additional details with you regarding the recommendations for cultural and economic development. Jesse?
Thank you, Tony. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for cultural and economic development is split up into, as you can see on the screen, two large pots. The largest tranche of that, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars would be used to expand the small business grant program that the council authorized in August. As you can imagine, there is a tremendous amount of need, and we received nearly three hundred applications for the thirty-seven grants that are available. So these dollars would go to add an additional seventy-five grants to that application pool. We would not go through a new grant, a new application process, we would just add the additional seventy-five awards within the existing applicant pool to expedite the distribution of funds. Within that categorization, the priority areas are small local businesses, recreation, restaurant, food and beverage, hospitality, the very hard-hit sectors, and includes also arts and cultural organizations. The second pot of money would be one hundred thousand dollars that would go into larger grants probably in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range that would go to our community partners focused on supporting cultural organizations and small businesses on the east side. So groups like the Bellevue Chamber, the Bellevue downtown association, the India Association of Western Washington, for example, would be able to receive a grant from this pot to make sure that the technical assistance services, the marketing services, the business planning services that they provide to our community will be sustainable over the, over the next year. We would be repaying them for costs incurred already, so this would be all of the eligibility requirements of the dollars. So that's, those are the two tranches for cultural and economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Our recommendations for allocation of human services dollars are informed from information we have received directly from providers in the community. As each of you can imagine and probably know, human service agencies are facing significant unbudgeted expenses related to COVID-nineteen response. These expenses have been getting incurred due to a variety of things, including an increased demand for services and supplies, the need for personal protective equipment, social distancing. In addition, a number of agencies have experienced simultaneous income deficits due to a decline in donations. In order to meet the very short deadline that has been set to fully use these funds, staff are recommending that one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars be dispersed as grants to human service agencies that are currently under contract with the City of Bellevue after documenting costs that they have incurred in response to COVID-nineteen. These agencies have already been vetted by staff and the Human Services Commission, which will expedite the process. Agencies will just need to complete a short application for review by staff, and funds will then be awarded to the agencies who meet eligibility criteria. Inclusion and, in conclusion and to review, we are seeking direction on the ordinance that would authorize the execution of an amendment allowing the acceptance of these funds amending the two thousand nineteen twenty twenty operating grants and donations fund to increase the appropriation by the same amount amending the two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty Human Services Fund to increase appropriation by one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred and authorizing these recommended uses of the CARES Act funding. And with that, Jesse and I are both available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay, great, so good, I can see everybody now. So thank you for that. I'm going to see if, who has questions and comments on this. I'm gonna start with Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, since he's the liaison for our Human Services Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I just want to commend the staff, you know, Jesse, Tony, and Nathan. I know getting clear guidance on the CARES Act was sometimes very challenging in terms of how the amounts could be distributed, how quickly they needed to be used, and, and, and et cetera. So I appreciate all the hard work you went through to get us to this point. My biggest concern here, as I've shared with you earlier, is, you know, how quickly can we get this turned around? You know, we're talking about the, the businesses, the, the cultural organizations and the residents who are in deep need for these funds right now. So if you could walk us through quickly, just how quickly, and I really appreciate the fact that we've shortened the application, we're all, only working with, with those folks, like, for example, on the human services side that are already contracted with the city, so they're known entities, so it's really gonna help speed up the process as well, but in both instances, can you just quickly walk us through the, the quick timeline so that we can get these funds to these folks and organizations as quickly as possible?
Absolutely. Jesse, would you like to share first?
Absolutely. And Deputy Mayor, to answer that question, we expect that it should take about two to three weeks to get the additional grant recipients in the, in the proper queue and under contract. So by October thirtieth, we should have the majority of those additional grant recipients signing their agreements with the city. Now, some of that does depend on the recipient's ability to make sure they have all of their receipts and documentation, everything that we need. But by the end of the month, we should have the majority of it in process.
And are we helping any, any folks or businesses if they need help or guidance to walk them through that application process? Do we have that ability there?
Yes, so staff is available to provide as much technical assistance as we can. We also have our contractors at Business Impact Northwest available, should anybody need assistance in a language other than English.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I saw, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Tony.
Sorry about that. And Deputy Mayor, it would probably be about one to two weeks longer for the human services grants, simply because we still need to put out and receive an application.
Terrific, thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I want to see everybody else who wants to speak, so I get a full picture. I'm seeing Councilmember Lee. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I have some other questions Deputy Mayor has. Human services. You are the recipients, the money will be going to additional needs, right? It's, if without this money, they would have people who will not be served. So this money that's not available so that will go to the agencies, the agencies will be able to distribute it for new services. That's correct?
So the way agencies.
It's not reimbursing for what's already been done, but it's new needs.
No, it actually, Councilmember Lee, is, they document their expenses that they have incurred to us that are not being covered by another funding source, and this is a grant to help them absorb those expenses.
So if that not been the square, what would they have done? There would be a deficit?
Likely so, yes, sir.
What happened? I mean.
So a couple of things can happen.
Money, the one percent million dollars not given.
Sure, great question. A couple of scenarios that I could think of that could occur is one, yes, many of the agencies are having to deplete their reserves, which leaves them in a very vulnerable position as a nonprofit, especially as the pandemic continues, as donations continue to be impacted and fundraising events continue to be impacted. We could foresee the result being that especially smaller nonprofits who already do not tend to have sufficient reserves could end up closing, and so we could see similar trends in the nonprofit sector that we are seeing in the business sector.
Right, so it's really something we don't know what's gonna happen, but it's to prevent something from happening. So I, that's why there's a confusion here. You know, people, I used to believe that the money would actually go to more people that's in need, that would not have gotten the, 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 the help if there's no money there, but it's not really given to the recipients. It's given to the agencies so that they can take care of their financial situation.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, that applies to the city, that's my second question. The city's getting a chunk of it, but it's really to reimburse the city for the, the, the work we've already done. So that's the same question for the city. If we don't get that money, that only means that the city would have a higher deficit. Now we get this money, so we may see a lower deficit. So it's not really going to do new stuff we're gonna do. There's not gonna be new things we've been performing, right?
That is correct.
Using the same lodging that applies to the, to the culture and economic development as well, okay? And so, right, that's the case, yeah. It, it's really to cover our own the, the service already performed. It's not going to the new services. To me, it's a little bit disappointing. You know, I think that there's still people out there that need help, and we're not helping them because we don't have the money. So I was hoping that the money will come and actually go to those folks. And the agencies like the city, we're doing whatever we're doing, we're talking about, we're doing everything, but that, that's, that's a tough position to be in. I agree, hundred percent, but we have to figure out how to do that and how to go through that, you know. Hopefully, you know, we can manage it. So, so there's a disconnect here somewhere for me. But I still feel, of course, I mean, if the government's willing to give us money, I will take it. But it's not as satisfying, as effective as I thought it was that the money actually goes to some other folks that, you know, need this money. Okay, so that's what I'm saying. I don't know whether other councilmembers know the way I did before, or I do now, but I think it's important to, to understand. So I appreciate you explaining that. So, yeah, it's, it's too bad. I was hoping that the money would actually go to people who are actually going to benefit from the new money, but it isn't. It's just helping the agencies to get over a hump.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee, that's three minutes. Councilmember Zon, I'm gonna call myself next, then I'll call on you, just, thank you. I, you know, it's interesting, this, these are emergency times, and as a small business owner, I know the feeling of scrambling. Sometimes you have more revenues than you anticipate, and sometimes you have fewer revenues, but you have to keep serving your customer base. And these agencies have been unable to do the big fundraisers that they normally do. This has not been a typical year, and it is a month-to-month existence for them, serving the month-to-month needs of the people that they're serving. And so I am so proud of our city, and I'm so grateful to, whether it's the federal government, the state, or the county, who's funneling this, these funds into our city so that we can distribute them to the organizations that are serving the people who need this the most. So I really appreciate this opportunity to move these funds along. One thing that I think Councilmember Lee is alluding to, and if not, this is something that I really believe in, you know, extraordinary situations, they take extraordinary measures. And I know we do do annual applications for human service funding. I would like to see if it's possible for us to open that up again and allow organizations that are working so hard to serve the people in our community during this crisis an opportunity to apply for funding, because I, you know, hopefully, it will continue to come gradually every month, and we will continue to distribute, and it would really be nice to be able to to help the people who are doing a lot of the heavy lifting in our community. And, and they're only, the only challenge is that they've never applied for funding before. So I'd appreciate if, if you could look into that, Tony.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've taken note, and I will, I will look into that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zon?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure that I was clear on, on what I understand. And that is that the money has to actually be dispersed by the end of November. So that's the genesis for why this is a reimbursement model and not a providing the funds which then the agencies are gonna be dispensing over time, right? So I hear the, the concern from Councilmember Lee. But my sense is that by being able to be reimbursed for expenses already incurred, then there's potentially monies that they would be able to help with the community that they were using to pay their own bills. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmembers on, you're correct, and the, the reason that we're doing this is because of the November thirtieth deadline, correct? And I would say accurate that that is a possibility of how the agencies would be able to redistribute dollars.
Yeah, so I, I really support that part. I like the idea of potentially opening it up for others if there are additional CARES funding that comes. We've been trying to advocate at this national level for funding directly to cities for months. And in addition to that, I just want to say that really glad that in addition to the human services, we're, we're providing an additional seventy-five grants for small businesses, because to me, two hundred and ninety-six applications that we were only able to provide thirty-seven grants the first round, that's a very small component. So the fact that now we're gonna be over a hundred grants to our small business is so important, as well as going through the community-based organization, so thank you for looking at this mix, and really, it's a balance between all the needs in our community, and I appreciate staff really doing the hard work to figure out how to make that balance work, so thank you.
Great, okay, so.
Can I add one, one, thirty seconds?
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thirty seconds.
Councilmember Lee, I'm gonna ask. Councilmember Lee, I'm going to ask Councilmember Stokes to speak first because he's not had a chance to, but I will come around to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things, one, keep in mind that, and I understand what Councilmember Lee's talking about, but if these agencies don't have funding replaced, there is a very high chance of them not being able to continue to provide services, and they may have to shut down temporarily, so it's it's kind of either or. It's helping people in various ways, so I thoroughly support this. Be nice to have them reimbursed and some extra money. But I I I just don't see the distinction there, it's helping people and helping the agencies help the people get through this, just like we do with businesses. We're basically reimbursing businesses, not giving them money to do something in the future. And I think that also, you know, there are some of these that are, I I think are going forward that we could help. And the idea of having the city get some money back and then extending some services is great too. But again, I I think it's a very good program, and I'm I'm not concerned about that in the circumstances. And I appreciate what the staff is doing, and it seems to me a very balanced and reasonable allocation of the funding to the different parts. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who has not yet spoken who'd like to speak on this? Otherwise, we will go to Councilmember Lee. Go ahead. Councilmember Lee, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those of you who cannot see me, when the mayor was talking about the port. Yes, thank you. I was just saying that for those of you who don't see me, when Mayor was talking about her support for this program, I was nodding my head, I was supporting everything she's saying, I agree with her. It's just to correct the perception, some of the councilmember on my conversation. I was not concerned, I'm not concerned. I'm just asking clarification, what this is actually do. I think to me, it wasn't clear. So, you know, to me, the first priority would be to help the people in need, who are the actual people who are needing rent subsidy, who are needing food, who are needing help. But the fact that it isn't, you know, it's not as desirable for me, okay? But it is also important, I agree, that we help those agencies who are going to provide the services, even including the city of Bellevue. I talked to me, I think we we we, Bellevue is pretty good to take, but I'm confident we can get out of this. So there's no, it's not a concern, so I do support the system. And the program I do support, I appreciate the funding and appreciate what we're doing, especially if it is like it's described and economic development. We are providing additional help, how many, two hundred grants to small businesses, that's great, that's new. They're getting it, right? If we just go into the organization, for example, go to Chamber of Commerce. Well, I'm not so sure what's Chamber Commerce going to do with two hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so that's my 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 understanding of how the program works.
Councilmember Lee, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify something here, and Tony, you can tell me if I'm incorrect. This money is definitely helping people who need the assistance. It is paying back what the organization has already spent helping, directly helping individuals and families and and small business owners. I mean, the grant thing is different because the grant is going directly out, but in terms of the human services, this money that is being replaced for these organizations have gone to directly help people in need. So it's not like we're buying the organization a bunch of pens. It's just instead of giving them the money in advance, and then they find a place to put it, they've already dipped into the reserves, overextended themselves, and provided resources for the people in need, and now there those pools are being replenished so that they can do it again next month. It is a month-to-month thing. So Tony, you can tell, you can correct me if I'm wrong there.
You're correct, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we've already made the motion, we've seconded it, we've had a discussion, a nice presentation. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. So I'm going to go back to my old way of doing things, which is to introduce the resolution, have the presentation, and then make the motion, because that's what I know. And we have two presentations on an issue tonight, we have a point and counterpoint, if you will. And Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this, please?
Sure, sure, Mayor. Resolution ninety-two six imposes an additional sales tax and use tax of one-tenth of one percent for affordable housing and related mental and behavioral health services. And as you mentioned, before I hand this over to the Bellevue staff representation, King County requested time on our agenda, and Leo Flore, who is the King County Director of Community and Human Services, will be providing us a brief presentation and will be answering any questions that councilmembers may have of him. And then after he's done, we'll turn it over to Matt Comas, Director of Community Services, to provide a staff presentation to the council. So I would, I guess I, Mayor, if you don't mind, we'll turn it over to Leo for a brief presentation.
Welcome.
Welcome, Leo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening, councilmembers, thank you for having me. For the record, my name is Leo Flore, and I'm the Director of King County's Department of Community and Human Services. I believe, Madam Mayor, you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers are in receipt of a letter from Executive Constantine today that lays out a lot of the details in his proposal. And my goal here today is to briefly summarize some of the key information and then to answer any questions that I may. First, I'd just like to say thank you and to to recognize Bellevue as a regional leader on a number of our most difficult but most important regional problems. Transit is certainly one of those, and more recently, and something that's more germane to to human services is COVID, where Bellevue's played a key part in a regional response that has been really successful so far in keeping the worst of that problem at bay. The Health Through Housing proposal that is currently before King County is a proposal to house two thousand chronically homeless households, which can include and does include youth and families in our community, and to do that within two years. So to have the scale to bond for four hundred million dollars, which is possible by keeping together county-wide sales tax that we believe would currently collect about sixty million dollars per year, and use half of that to bond for four hundred million dollars, which would be a investment that is the largest in our region's history in affordable housing and emergency housing for people experiencing chronic homelessness right now. And even at full power, that proposal, we believe, will house just less than half of the people experiencing chronic homelessness across King County right now. The speed is another important element of this proposal. Folks who know affordable housing and Bellevue is a leader in producing a lot of affordable housing know that it takes three, four, or five years from enactment or approval to the creation of that housing. And our approach here is one that we aim to have people housed immediately. And we know that this can work, we were able to do this in the context of the COVID emergency, where we were able to lease hotel rooms and have people staying in them within days and weeks. And that's a principle and a speed that we would like very much to be able to bring forward to the whole region. And then last, that this intervention is effective. This proposal would seek to take advantage of temporary economic conditions. The hospitality sector is the most affected of our economic sectors during this COVID recession. And while that is certainly something that I think all of us would rather not have be the case, it also presents an opportunity to buy hotels and to put them into service, to buy other single-room settings like nursing homes and put them into service now. Many of them are empty at rates of occupancy ten percent or below, and to put them into service for members of our community, and to do that in a way that we believe and we have seen can cut in half the average rate and cost per unit that we currently typically pay for a permanent supportive housing project. The other thing that we see with COVID is that homelessness is a problem in our community right now, it's a problem everywhere, and it's about to get worse. We know the number of evictions out there is far beyond the amount of eviction relief that we've been able to put out there, or potential evictions, and when the moratoriums do end, which we expect will happen next year at some point, it's currently been extended at the state through the end of this year. We have thousands of households who have months of unpaid rent right now, and we can only expect that that is going to take a problem that has not gotten better this year and make it even worse. And so that really gets to this idea of speed being an essential component of our strategy. We need to be able to house people next year, not four years from now. So that's, those are really the the key components. One question has been timing, and so just to acknowledge that the executives' challenge to us as staff in creating this proposal was to take the time to craft a proposal that had the scale, had the speed, and use an effective intervention, and in this case, the University of Washington has recently put out a study that that shows how effective this type of intervention has been in this community this year. But to take the time to craft that proposal and make sure that we could make a visible change in the community. He made sure that we understood that we ought not to take lightly the gravity of imposing a sales tax during a combined recession and pandemic that is unequal to about a hundred years in our country, that we should only be able to do that if we had a plan put together that could make a difference at a scale on a regional problem that we have to date not succeeded in reducing substantially over many years. So this proposal that is before the King County Council right now, and which the City of Bellevue is currently considering at the city level, that the county plan is to take a temporary chance to make a lasting difference, recognizing that with regional problems, we know that we are bigger, we are bolder, and we're going to be most effective when we act together. So that's the the quick overview. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Mayor or members of the council.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you for coming tonight. I know you probably had to sit there waiting in the wings for a long time, and we appreciate your patience. Can you, councilmembers, please raise your hands visually if if you'd like to make a comment or have a question? Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor, and Leo, again, thanks for being here tonight, appreciate it, appreciate you waiting to the kind of the end of the evening to get to this topic here tonight. Two quick questions for you. Have you identified any specific projects within Bellevue yet? I'm not quite sure where we are with the with the plan or where Bellevue fits in, so I'm just kind of curious if there's anything there. And i- if yes, have any sites been selected, and have you been working with staff at all within the city of Bellevue?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I can state clearly and unequivocally, we do not have a a project in Bellevue identified that we have not, you know, talked to to your city staff about, and I think that's a really key point. The state statute requires consultation with cities before placing a facility within them, but we also know that that's just going to be what's most effective. That what we have seen with any sort of affordable housing or shelter is that community support and city support are really critical, not just to site, but then to support the people who live there afterwards. And so that's a key component of our proposal, no specific site in Bellevue right now, and would very much enjoy the opportunity to work with your city staff as we were to develop any of those.
Okay, thanks for that. My second question is, under the single-room use of motel, use of motels model, I have a question regarding that because my understanding is they're using one in Renton for people currently experiencing homelessness. And who decides how individuals are assigned to that facility? And the part of the reason I'm asking is that I've heard, and I'd like if you if you can clarify, that Renton officials asked to be able to house people that were experiencing homelessness, and they were not allowed to do so. So I'm not sure if that's accurate, if it if it is, I'd like to know what what the thought process was there or why that decision was made.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So the the hotel in Renton is, was a chance to prove a concept, but came up in a very different context. So in Renton, that hotel, we had identified a shelter within Seattle that was housing about two hundred and fifty people. They were sleeping about six inches from each other, and this was in March when the pandemic had just started. And we knew that if we did not move those two hundred and fifty people into a safer setting, that we risk significant spread of COVID. And in fact, what we found across the region in congregate settings, including one in Bellevue, is that where we did still have congregate settings, even as they spread people out, we had that spread. So the idea with the hotel in Bellevue, very specifically cited under Public Health Officer Guidance and Authority, was to displace a dangerously crowded shelter into a single building. Now, the that issue of local ability to refer residents, I think this is really important, and it's a lesson, frankly, that I think King County is incorporating as we would go forward. The city of Bellevue has identified previously a real interest and priority in being able to access affordable housing, emergency housing within Bellevue to be able to to cite residents. And we think that that is an important priority. For the same reason that community support is important for a facility, staying in your community is really important for people. And so I think one of the adjustments that we look forward to being able to make as we hopefully or or may have the opportunity to implement the Health Through Housing proposal is to to build on that and to keep people within their community and to work with cities to be able to provide access to housing, and this is possible because of the scale of the proposal. This is not a one hundred or two hundred unit building, this is a proposal for thousands of units.
Thanks, Leo, appreciate it.
Councilmember Stokes, I believe you had your hand up?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to pass right now.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Uh-oh, oh, good, councilmembers on?
Um, yes, thank you. So I understand that the, when we look at the sales tax, that fifty percent is is leveraged as part of the bonding, and it's over a twenty-year period. But the sales tax increase is in perpetuity, so it doesn't actually sunset, is that correct? And has there been discussion about whether it sunsets? And so I'm just trying to get us an even broader big picture of the plan than the four hundred million bonding and the next two years, because this is a especially if it's one with that in perpetuity. And then when you were talking about the Renton facility, I think one of the concerns is that when we're talking about housing, it's not just a bed, it's making sure we have all of the supportive services that are so crucial as people are trying to exit from homelessness. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little more broadly about the plan than than the piece that you've just, you've talked about so far.
Thank you, councilmember. So as to the the plan, as you mentioned, the state statute, which is imposition of a tax, does not have a limit within the state statute. There is no time limit to the imposition imposition of the tax in the version of it that is before the county council, I I cannot speak with specificity on on whether such a limit exists within the the ordinance before your council. The overall approach is to be able to take regional level funds. You can use up to half of the proceeds in a year to use for bonding expenses, which is one of the key features of this proposal. And then, as you point out, councilmember, with those two thousand households that we would like to house, we recognize that when we are trying to solve the problem of chronic homelessness, visible homelessness, the people who live in tents and streets on on interstates right now across King County, that we have to be able to provide sufficient services so that not only do they experience the sort of safety or dignity and health of a place to be, but that we can support them and help as many of them as possible to move into permanent housing or independent housing over time. And in fact, we've been able to see that at the Renton facility in smaller numbers over a short period of time, and and I won't attempt to recount the University of Washington study, but it does have a lot of what they have described as compelling evidence of the of the model. And so with the half of the proceeds that would not be used for bonding expenses, that would go into a service package to then support households, again, whether they be veterans, seniors, families, youth, or single adults who are in these emergency housing settings that we would fund, and then support them so that they can improve health, and as many as possible can move on to, again, their own employment, to move on to recovery for behavioral health conditions, and to move into independent housing if that's appropriate for them.
So related to that, then, we know that our. CFH, Congregation for the Homeless, is working on. Men's shelter, supportive housing, and also low income housing. So I know even though you mentioned to Deputy Mayor that there are no sites identified for purchase. When I think about though, the supportive housing needs and the work that we're already doing in Bellevue. I'd like to understand how much of that money potentially is going to be serving what we're actually working on in our own strategies.
Thank you, councilmember. At King County, we're proud supporters of, of the projects that you mentioned. With what was House Bill fifteen ninety's proceeds. One important distinction is that. It can be used for housing and housing related services and behavioral health, but a shelter and the provision of shelter is not an eligible expense. So where the projects that you have named will have ongoing operating expenses. You are raising a critical point and frankly, a critical weakness in our entire regional system. Which is that when we do muster the, the funding to create units. We do not have ongoing sustained regional level sources to operate them. And so one of the, I think, important features of this proposal. Is that not only for these two thousand units, does it provide the opportunity to operate them on an ongoing basis, which is a, a cliff. We often call it a problem that we have. But it also would provide additional behavioral health services that could be, for example, layered into existing projects for congregations for the homeless.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Stokes, are you ready? Or did you want to let Councilmember Robertson go first?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Let her go first.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Robertson.
Hi, Leo. What is the status of the implementation plan? Are you drafting it now? And when do you think it will be done?
Thank you, councilmember. The implementation plan that would guide the annual expenditures of the levy. Which would need to properly come before both the King County Council and the Regional Policy Committee as well. The, we do not have a initial draft of it. What is currently before the King County Council and will again, need to go through the Regional Policy Committee. Is an ordinance that would provide us the guidance and some of the initial parameters and goals that we would need to include in a proposed. Implementation plan and then to transmit that as quickly as we could, should the council choose to enact the tax and the policy tomorrow.
Have you consulted with any of the cities of King County on that plan?
So we've been in several weeks of conversation with cities. Through multiple venues, one of which is the Affordable Housing Committee, which is a place where there is strong city representation. And then another specific to this proposal, the executive has consulted with cities, Sound Cities Association. As have many of the executive office's staff in the development of the proposal. And then since the proposal has been released. And then importantly, the city of W, for example, as well as a number of the regional. Bodies, arches, and other example, have existing plans, I think, that must be our stop of first resort. As we consider what it looks like to work within cities and other regions. You, for example, have. Created, I think, a tremendous effort in Bellevue, a high quality plan that. Lists a number of needs and, and I think that's the place for us to start and to make sure that we are not attempting to recreate the real. The wheel over and over again. You know, Bellevue knows Bellevue well. You've published a plan. I think that's where we would need to start in terms of regional collaboration in your city.
Thank you. Have you actually consulted with Bellevue, though, on the plan?
We have, not on the implementation plan, which is not yet drafted on, on the concept. We have been in contact with Bellevue city staff. And then I'm aware that several members of the executive's office, as well as members of the county council, have been in, in communication with Bellevue elected leaders.
And one, and one more question. On the Regional Homelessness Authority Governing Board, does Bellevue have a seat on that board?
Bellevue is not, does not have a seat on the Regional Homelessness Authority. One, to the extent that this might be what you're asking, councilmember. This is a, a housing plan by design, a housing tax by design. And housing is not within the purview of the Regional Homelessness Authority, which is focused on shelter and other emergency response. And so I think it is an important distinction that this strategy is about emergency housing and the services to support it. And that is not within the scope of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who has a comment or a question? Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, just to follow up. So I guess one of the things we're interested in and, and you know, we haven't seen really the full plans is. And, and some concerns have been raised about, is this just an effort to bring homeless people in, find a, a place for them and. That's about it. So is there, we, we have, really haven't seen the firm commitment to supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing you're talking about. I mean, this is kind of the first conversation we've had on this. And I guess this is why there's some concern. So you're, you're very clear that there will be, the funding will also go towards the permanent supporting, right?
That's correct, councilmember. And to the extent that it's useful, a typical per unit per year cost for supportive housing would be about fourteen thousand dollars per unit per year. To fund the services for a person in that housing. In, in our proposal and the modeling, we have assumed twenty thousand dollars per year per person per unit. In recognition of the fact that when seeking to house a chronically homeless family or individual. The service needs are going to be more robust and that we're going to really need. Particularly in the space of behavioral health, employment and, and human services. To provide more services than we traditionally have been able to within our community, even as we know that we want to.
Okay. I mean, this is, I, I think partly, part of the problem, why this is so hard is because of the timing and the, the kind of lack of. I mean, I know there have been communications, but we, we just have the feeling we really need. Haven't had the chance to sit down and really talk about this. And how does this fit into? As you mentioned, I think we have a great plan, a strategy, we have to implement it. And that's what we're really focusing on and, and working with, how do we do that? And this comes along. And we, so it kind of puts us in a bind in a sense from. The city standpoint and looking at the city and the surrounding areas that we, we work with. And it, it, it just seems to impose another layer on top of that. And. I think the timing is, is, is a real factor. And I. When is King County going to adopt this? The council, is it coming up tomorrow or?
The, the enactment ordinance is before the King County Council tomorrow, councilmember. And to the speed. It is a, an authority that became council manic this year within the state, state legislative action made that change. And I can say that from the staff level in terms of proposing it. There really has been this clear sense that we have discovered. Something that perhaps ought not to have been surprising, but that I think is different in our community. A strategy that is working for a group of people that we have been hard pressed to find consistent solutions for. And we compare this against the urgency that I know we all feel it was, it came up several times in today's meeting. Homelessness exists across the region right now. And I, I don't have the ability to tell you by how much. But we are seeing a lot of indicators that homelessness is about to get a lot worse in our community. Both economically, health wise and housing status wise. And so that is really contributing to the urgency to move forward. And then last, these economic conditions that we. On modeling, believe are going to allow us to cut about in half the per unit capital cost are not going to last. We do not know how long hotels will be sort of artificially cheap. We do not know how long the economy will be in its current state. And again, while that is, I think, a tragedy, it also presents an opportunity that we are eager to, to, to take advantage of on behalf of the community.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. So. I think that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Floor. So we will move on to the, the city's presentation now. Go ahead, Mr. Miyaki, if you'd like to introduce.
Mayor and councilmembers, for the presentation this evening, we have Matt Cummins, the, our Director of Community Development here. Write an overview of the resolution as well as other relevant information for you to make an informed decision tonight. Matt? You're muted.
My first time on mute there for a public meeting. Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, and thank you, Mr. Floor, for your comments, remarks here this evening. We want to make a few remarks for the council and your consideration deliberation this evening and talk a little bit about. City of Bellevue, the affordable housing policy and the overall need, particularly for funding streams going forward. One thing I'm struck by, particularly by listening to Mr. Floor's comments, is the overall need in the region. And the policy objectives that are being described in multiple forums here really are very aligned. The question before the city council is. How and where would the city like that tax stream to be spent after being collected? And House Bill fifteen ninety contemplates the collection of one tenth of one percent sales tax for very specific purposes around affordable housing. And I'll talk about a, a few of those. I think it would be important, anybody watching on TV would know sort of how this is supposed to work as you, as you think about that. And the tax itself would start being collected in January of next year and then, and then going out. So one thing of note on this, House Bill fifteen ninety does specifically contemplate. The action that's in front of the city council this evening. Several cities have enacted a similar, either ordinance or resolution on this particular opportunity. Notably Kent, Renton, Snoqualmie, and Issaquah over here on the, on the south and east side. So when we start talking about this, that would be useful to talk about. The, what the money can be used for. How it fits within City of Bellevue's affordable housing strategy. And then what the likely opportunities are, you know, should the council enact this resolution this evening. So the main purposes for under fifteen ninety relate directly to constructing and preserving affordable housing. For very specific populations, and I'll speak to that here in a minute. Constructing mental and behavioral health facilities and then funding the operation and maintenance. You know, of the new units or, or the treatment centers. So the specific populations relate to sixty percent AMI or less. And I think I might just pause on that, just to give a, a reference point, because we're going to talk about the layering of. Of deeper affordability versus a number of the other programs that the city currently has adopted. An eighty percent AMI unit right now is, for a family of four is roughly eighty six thousand dollars a year. Or twenty two hundred, two thousand, two hundred dollars a month as a maximum rent. Whereas when you jump into much deeper affordability at the fifty percent level. Same family of four down to fifty four thousand dollars a year or one thousand, four hundred dollars a month in rent. And so just to give you an order of magnitude of the, of the need, many of you are familiar with housing costs and are tracking the rental costs throughout the city. The specific populations that are contemplated under fifteen ninety are behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens. Homelessness, or those at risk of being homeless, persons with disabilities and domestic violence victim survivors. So when we start to look at how this program may work. The resolution that's coming before you creates an option that would harvest that one tenth of one percent sales tax that, that. People in Bellevue would pay. That equates to roughly nine million dollars a year. You can bond for or borrow against that revenue stream. House bill only allows for fifty percent of that to be bonded against. That would yield roughly seventy five million dollars should we do a similar plan to what the county is describing. The main difference would be that if the council enacted the resolution this evening. The council would be able to control and decide should that money be spent in Bellevue. Or partner with outside agencies. And I'll talk a little bit about that later on because. Nearly every affordable housing project that we're involved in has multiple capital stack partners. And generally involves both the city and the county. And the same would be true in the reverse, should we harvest the money and then decide to partner. With another outside, outside agency. If the county, if the city were to choose not to enact the resolution this evening. As was alluded to earlier, some of the money would come back. It's thirty percent of that nine million dollars. The main difference just being decision making, you know, and, and control over what types of projects and where they would be located in the city. So I thought at this point, transition into a fit generally with the city's affordable housing strategy and talk about overall need. Council may recall at last Monday's evening, we spent a lot of it of time talking about the overall need. And the jobs, housing imbalance in the city. And as we continue to grow and grow in employment, it's putting more pressure on our housing market and particularly at the lower incomes. So there are a couple of very specific strategies that are within the affordable housing plan that get at trying to. Get to deeper levels of affordability. And as we talked it through last week, council was identifying and we were helping you with. There is a gap in terms of the implementation for our ability to achieve some of those very, very deep levels of affordability. Based on what we're hearing from our markets in terms of production based on the incentive system through the land use code. And whether or not some of the financial programs like MFTE. Are lending themselves more towards workforce or eighty percent AMI production compared to the, the deeper affordability. So should council enact this, this may be an opportunity to get deeper levels of affordability. And I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute. Two specific strategies in the affordable housing. Strategic plan that are directly applicable here would be A1, which is the strategy around preservation. And specifically looking at either apartment complexes or the hotel options that have recently. Become in vogue and members of our council have brought that to staff's attention to be, be more deliberate in taking a look at. The main gap in financially achieving that was a funding gap, honestly. And so when we looked at the. Relatively small amounts of money, we've been traditionally packaging that money into. Either an acquisition like Highland Village, which was a, it came up and, and we were able to get it done. Or the subsidy of new unit creation. Funding stream here would allow us to be far more aggressive in the A1 preservation strategy. Another very interesting strategy is the C1 strategy. And the C1 strategy council has mostly been thinking about through the lens of. Upzoning and your regulatory authorities to help encourage the creation of these units on faith-based, public-owned properties. Having the ability to have a dedicated revenue source to bring money to the table. In those situations where there's lower basis in the land. Would allow for the creation of these deeper affordable, affordable units. So that would be another opportunity there. And just to give a couple of examples of what that looks like, because the city actually has. Worked on those types of projects. So some of you on council at the time are may know about the Andrews Glen project at St. Margaret's. Back in two thousand nine, that project was put together and I'm going to give you some numbers just to give you a sense of, of magnitude of what, you know, you get to nine million, what does that buy you? On Andrews Glen project, the, the construction cost for those types of units was two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a unit. And that was in two thousand nine dollars. That was a project or is a project that's directly applicable here because it services veterans that are coming out of homelessness and others in very, very low income need. Another project to, to consider would be the thirty Bellevue project, which is just a little bit north of, of town here in. And it was sixty three units there, half of which were for those coming directly out of homelessness. This project's just recently been occupied a couple of years ago. It was at about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a unit. So if you, just, just to give you an order of magnitude, of course, the creation of every project and every set of units is different based on a variety of variables. But it'll, it'll give you a sense for the kinds of things we have done and what we could do if we could be more aggressive, you know, in this field. So I want to finish up talking a little bit about. Our, the layering is what many people call it, the various implementation tools that we have. Most of our land use coding is incentivized around the eighty percent AMI number. That is definitely becoming more prevalent and you're, and you're hearing that in a number of our stakeholder outreach. To, to developers and to, to landholders. What was interesting was last week's discussion and the feedback you got around MFTE. So MFTE as a program was set up a few years ago, identifying that it could be used as a tool. To achieve deeper affordability in the creation of, of these units and to serve sensitive populations. And what the council heard was, and then you asked us to look into. Is MFTE becoming a better tool to look at eighty percent AMI creation? And if so, what might we do to, to? Backfill or to look at the deeper levels of affordability in some of these more sensitive populations? So that level of analysis has started after last week's meeting. And tonight we are, have an opportunity to talk to you about a potential way to. Fund those deeper levels of affordability, however the MFTE discussion comes out. So we anticipate a question around, you know, how would we use the funds? We would use the funds to help the community, our community most in need. And. What we are finding is that there's a tremendous need, you know, in this area particularly. We haven't had the money to be as aggressive in providing for that market need as, as we could. So specifically. It would certainly be around the preservation and construction of, of new affordable units serving this population. We've had great success with the projects we have done that really have been very collaborative, you know, in the past. And then we could look at funding some of the ongoing operations that were discussed earlier. In and around the East Gate facility as that comes online and or, you know, other programmatic things if the council was interested. So. I'll just back up and say the key question for the council this evening on the adoption of the resolution. Relates to where the council would like the tax money collected in Bellevue to be spent. And if you adopt the resolution before you this evening, that would allow you to have the, have the harvesting of the tax money. And then we could certainly collaborate as we always do and partner with various agencies, including King County going forward. So. I think with that, I will stop and be happy to answer any questions if the council has any of me. I've got Tony Call, our finance director here. She and I have been working very closely on what. The revenue streams may look like and what we might do with them. And then I've got our housing staff as well.
Okay, so I'm sure we all have a lot to say on this. I'm actually the Bellevue. I represent the sound cities on the affordable, King County's affordable housing committee. That is met for, I believe, over a year. So I am happy to kind of start with that if that's okay with everybody. And. I'll give any, anybody as many bites of this apple as you need. So we'll just kind of go through and go around again if we want. So Mac, thank you for that presentation. I've tried to organize my thoughts here. I hope this comes out in an organized fashion. So you talk about the incentives that we've adopted and are adopting through our affordable housing plan. And really that's for eighty percent and higher AMI. For it's very hard to get sixty percent area median income and lower. Just using incentives, but you mentioned the layering and the funding is that's required to get those deeper affordabilities. So the question for me is how do we best serve the population? At thirty percent or below media, area median income? And how do we address the populations with behavioral health needs, which we have a lot of? How do we provide housing for our homeless? That, and housing that recognizes the human dignity of each person and saves lives? And how do we best prevent homelessness? Because that's a big part of this in my opinion as well. And then how do we move quickly to do all that? So I also want to know, how, how do we continue to partner with the county? How do we best do that? And how do we best partner with Arch and our other regional partners? So. One thing that's frustrating to me is there's a population in Bellevue that I'm very passionate about help, helping. And I've been. Working on this for over three years and it's just unbelievable to me how hard it is to help this population, but it is our homeless school children. In our Bellevue School District of which we have over three hundred and fifty. So these kids, I mean, how on earth can a child learn when they do not have stable housing? And if you look at the data that the Bellevue School District has presented us with, that these children. Have the same ability to learn and graduate and meet your, meet their academic milestones as children with disabilities. And when you talk about homelessness as being a health problem. There you have it right there. It's a significant disability for a child not to have stable housing. And so there have been two opportunities that I know of where we could have partnered with the county. To address housing for this population. One was with thirty Bellevue and imagine housing. And we had all those units and we could have put all our Bellevue School District families in those units, but instead the county insisted on coordinated entry. And we ended up bringing families from outside the area. That did not have a support system into that housing area and taking Bellevue School District families and moving them. Housing them in another city. So now our Bellevue School District. Has to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to bust those kids. At least they did when we had in-person school. But to bust them into the Bellevue School District. So you know, that, that's one example. The second one. Is there is an organization that's looking at buying one of our older hotels. By kind of by the old Boeing, by Airfield Park area. That could house our Bellevue School District families and provide them the support services. That they need to get back on their feet and get into stable housing. And the county denied them housing. Money to do that. So they got a, a letter saying they're not going to fund that. I just, I can't understand why we're not prioritizing. These kids and these families. It's just beyond me. And so I, I don't care how we do this. I just want to make sure we house these children. And that we take care of these, these, this precious population in our community. I also want to prevent homelessness. It's so much more expensive. To get somebody out of the abyss of homelessness than it is to keep them from becoming homeless. The, the psychology of becoming homeless and just the desperation and it's so hard to recover from that. It is a significant trauma. And it's very easy to become homeless in Bellevue because we don't have all the layers of affordability that we need. You have your eighty thousand dollar a year job. And you get sick or your car breaks or your child gets sick or you somehow you, you lose that income. What's your option? Can you, is there anywhere in Bellevue? Okay, that was a great moment. That was my Alexa device talking back to me. Sorry. Anyway. How many places in Bellevue are there that are five hundred dollars a month? I mean, and then lower than that. And yet we would, we could have an opportunity. To create three hundred dollar a month housing in, you know, micro housing, maybe using these hotels. Maybe you don't have to qualify. Maybe you can have a mixed group of people, people who want to just live a modest life and people who that's all they can afford. But do you know that seventy percent? Of our homeless people in Bellevue could afford three hundred dollars a month if we were able to provide a place for them to live. At that rate and they'd be independent. And did you know that seventy percent of the Bellevue School District families and children who are homeless are from our BIPOC community? So you know, it, to me. It's just so important that we create that strat of, of affordable housing. That we really prioritize our Bellevue School District kids. And that whatever we do, whatever we decide to do. Our responsibility is going to be to implement our affordable housing plan, which we spoke about last week. To address our supportive housing needs of which we have many. And to move fast, we've got to get moving on this. And to partner with the county, with Arch and our other regional partners to address the, all the affordable housing needs. And the homelessness problems that our region is suffering from. So I'll be very interested to hear people's comments on how they think best to do that. But in my opinion, that is the task before us. So who would like to ask a question or make a comment? Councilmember Robertson?
Thanks. I'll start with a couple of questions for Mac. Mac. If we pass the resolution tonight. And then later on, when King County eventually adopts a plan, if we like it. We can repeal the, the. Resolution and allow all the tax dollars to go to the county. Is that correct?
You could do that or just decide to fund projects or something down the road at this, keeping the money coming to the city first.
Right. And that's what's going to be my next question. There's nothing in this, if we adopt this tonight, that would prohibit us. From partnering with the county on some projects that benefit the county in Bellevue, right?
That's right.
Right. Okay. So, but if we don't pass this tonight. And King County passes the, there's tomorrow. Then we have no control over the money that comes back. We might get thirty percent of it back. In projects that they might select, right?
The county requires at least, or the state bill requires at least thirty percent to be spent in Bellevue. But yes, you're right about decision-making about what types of projects are where.
And, yeah. Okay, so. I guess that's really kind of all my questions. I guess if we want to have a say. We need to pass this tonight. And this is our one chance to do it. There's really no harm in doing it tonight because we can always undo it later if we decide. That that is in the best interest of the people of Bellevue. I guess one more question. Is the money that you've been outlining, that is all based on money that is raised in Bellevue? So people who are working, living, shopping in Bellevue, right?
Yes, and it's also based on twenty nineteen. So of course, you know, post COVID, there'll be a relief period to, to get back to that number likely.
Okay, so mayor, by the way, I really appreciated what you were talking about. Really appreciated all the things you had to say. Would you want to do questions first and comments later? Because I definitely have comments. Or would you like me to give my comments?
No, I'd like to, we'll do questions right now if that's okay with you.
No, that's fine. When it comes back around, I'd like a chance to speak. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to call on people in order of my screen here. So councilmember Stokes, could you speak next? Do you have any questions? I don't hear you yet. I don't know if you're talking.
Councilmember Stokes here on mute.
I'm on mute.
There we go.
There we go. Okay. No, I'm, I'm, I'm still thinking about some of this. I do. I mean, I, I appreciate councilmember Robertson's. Noting that this is not a, you know, permanent decision if we decide to go this way. I'm just not sure. I've heard why, what will make a real difference. In either way we go on the ultimate results, we will get. I guess, I guess I'm just trying, we're talking, but concerns is we're talking about. Kind of two different things. And I guess it's a question to Mac. What the county is proposing is a specific program. That has certain elements and certain services. And what we're talking about is a much broader program. That encompasses a lot of things and we're not so far have actually focused on this particular part. So. I guess the question is. How do we, how do we bring this into our, our program and? The other is, are there restrictions on what we can do with the money? Can we actually take? If we keep the tax, can we actually spend it on some of the things we've been talking about already? I mean, I think, I think there are limitations on what we can do with it. So I'm just concerned about that. I'd like to have a little more explanation about. Of what we could do with the money if we kept it in Bellevue. And how much control would we really have over the expenditures? Because I think that's an important part of it.
So I hit the first, the first question first and then, and then talk about the second one. The, the money has to be spent on the creation of or preservation of affordable units. At sixty percent AMI or less for certain types of populations and without listing them all back off. Domestic violence survivors, veterans, those with disabilities, homelessness or about to be homelessness. Few others. I'm happy to pull the list back out if you'd like me to preview that. The question of harvesting the money and what we would do with it is something that we would certainly want to talk to the. Council in totality about because there's a universe of things that can be done there. And our observation is that we have more need than we have total money right now in the affordable housing strategy. So whether or not you all chose to look at. Covering the operations and maintenance of, of certain programs versus the creation of new units. That's something that would be a policy choice for the council. So, but in order to make that choice, you would need to have the revenue stream itself, which is tonight's choice. We, we would identify that there is an ongoing need and getting. That need is getting bigger at deeper affordability just within the city of Bellevue. And getting bigger each year as a result of housing production and affordability levels. And the city continues to become more desirable. So this revenue stream would be used to implement a number of things in the affordable housing strategy.
But I, 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 I'm just trying to make sure we define what it is and we know when we're, we're voting, when we're either what it's going to give us. It, 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 there are restrictions. I mean, we couldn't take it and do it on the full range of housing we're looking at. I mean, there are some limitations.
And, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I mean, not that they're not in the strategy, you know, I'm just, just trying to make sure we understand that. And. So I guess one of the other questions I have, and this would be kind of back again to the, to the county in a sense of. But I'm. It, it isn't clear where the funding for, or how much the funding is going to go for the, the. A permanent supportive services. And are we? And the other question is from what we're doing, or have we calculated that into? The cost of these type of houses i- if we're going to actually address in Bellevue permanent supportive housing? And I guess the question is, is that, is that pretty clear that, that we support permanent supportive housing? Similar to that being proposed by the county in our, in our priorities and our strategy?
So I think I hear a generic question and like, do we support supportive housing? And then question two would be if we had a revenue stream, what, what would we do with it relative to that? Topic?
Yeah, I just want to, just want to go over where that is part of our, part of our plan we're already having in place. And I mean, I, I. And I do understand that this is becoming a more, much bigger and more important aspect of, of affordable housing.
So yeah, answer to question one is yes. I mean, we, we do support a myriad of housing types. We have founded challenging as a community to fund. Things that are, are less than eighty percent AMI. And when you get down into the very, very low income. Those have been very, very challenging just over the, over the last several years, especially with the spike of, of overall housing cost and then the. Cost to produce new housing stock. Question two around where would that particular housing type? Lie within your priorities. There are currently a number of priorities. Below eighty percent in the affordable housing strategy that are not funded, you know, to, to the maximum extent possible. So I, I think as staff, we would want to talk to you all about where your priorities lie and where that fits to some of the things the mayor was just mentioning. You know, and a few other housing types that have been mentioned in the last couple of affordable housing updates.
Councilmember Stokes, that's three minutes. Can I come back to you or do you want to wrap it up?
Well, I, I guess the, the, the follow-up question that let me just ask him real quickly. So. If, so we could, and, and we have been in, in our plan and we could. Fund the same type of housing. And programs that, that King County, that, that are in the King County proposal, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Within city of Bellevue or partner to send some of the Bellevue tax money to somewhere else if that was your choice.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I don't want to jump the gun, but we might want to extend the meeting now as well. I doubt we're going to be done by ten PM. It's already close to twenty-two. Do you want to extend it now or wait a little bit?
Is there a motion to extend the meeting to ten thirty? Because we can, we can always end earlier.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, continue please.
Thank you. Mac, thank you for the great presentation. As always, just two quick questions for you. One, you had listed out the cities that so far have voted to adopt their own. Sales taxes. That was Issaquah, Renton, Kent, Snoqualmie and Covington. You might not have mentioned Covington, but I'll, let's not forget about Covington. But curious what intel or due diligence you did. Uh, but, um, curious what intel or due diligence you did there in terms of the reasoning those cities decided to take. The, uh, the, you know, the, 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 what is it? The zero point, point zero one percent sales tax.
Um, I don't, I don't have, uh, great intel there, um, but I can tell you that, um. Mo- all the cities that we have talked to have said that, uh, two things. Um, they're interested in a good, ongoing collaborative relationship with the county and they're looking forward to opportunities after they enacted their ordinance or resolution. Uh, and they were interested in in similar dialogue to what you're discussing, should the local control, you know, ha- in the short term happen now? And and then go forward from there.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Uh, second question, um, in regards to, um. Something that Leo had brought up, and I just want to be crystal clear on it about, he had mentioned a combined tax. So my understanding, if we adopt this tonight. King County can can still not pass something and add on top of the sales tax that we would take tonight, correct? We 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 wouldn't, they cannot double up on Bellevue residents in in that way. Is that, is that correct? Do I have that right? Or can they combine if they wanted to?
No, that's right. It wouldn't be a doubling up, uh, but they could take action minus Bellevue because we would have taken action before then.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. So I'm just reading through the materials and. You know, it does look like the the legislation does address, um. Homelessness and at risk of being homeless families with children. So I think Mayor, you had expressed that as one of the. Areas that are really important, so it does look like it allows for that. I think my question. Is, uh, Mac, you talked about A1 and C1. I'm also curious about the hundred and thirtieth TOD because it's an area that. You know, we had tagged as a, as a. Location where we can do more with affordable housing and yet there's some challenges and complexity. Would this funding be able to be used to work through whatever logjam there is there to actually move forward with affordable housing? And maybe even deeper affordability?
So so the answer to that question is yes, uh, but there are restrictions with this pot of money just from a color of money standpoint. Um, and so looking at deeper affordability and for very, uh, specific populations of people puts a a different. Lens on the one thirtieth project that had been contemplated. But the answer to your question is yes, should we want to satisfy those conditions and buy down the affordability, it could. Uh, and there are some financial constraints on that site that we are continuing to work on as well.
And and potentially, we could also look at leveraging Arch, which is the fifteen cities really on the east side. Because when I go back and I look at their Q1 twenty twenty, uh, report. We have twenty-five percent of the units that have been built. In Arch are at the thirty percent and below versus sixty-six percent that's in the thirty to sixty percent. So it's, if we look at the numbers, there is definitely a much deeper gap in the. Um, zero to thirty percent, even in the units that we've been able to build as as part of Arch. So that would be a place where some of this money could go and really be. Targeting that that deepest affordability of the zero to thirty percent. And done in a way where those that are that are really struggling in our community, and I absolutely agree that. When the eviction moratorium lifts, I'm trying to envision. How if you have eight months of back rent, how you'd ever make that up? And be able to stay in whatever rental unit you're in, so. My sense is as we have this prolonged covid, we're going to have more people potentially experiencing homelessness. So how we actually work on keeping people in their homes or making sure that we have more. Affordable units that are available so that folks are not displaced. I guess I'm I'm just really just trying to get a sense for. Um, or if we do enact this tax, that we're really clear that there is. Projects and. That the money would be going to because one of the the things that I appreciate about the King County plan. Is the, is the bonding and getting to two thousand people sheltered within two years. So that speediness and to scale, I think, is very important. So I just wanted to make sure that to the degree that if we are going to, um. Have that pot of money within our purview. That we are really looking at moving with the same speed and vigor. So that we are helping the most people in the shortest amount of time. And so I am a little bit concerned about that. And the fact that we are a region that works together on solving the issues that we have. And so we are, so I'm just trying to get a sense for whether we are. Whether there's a balanced approach or if it's only A or B.
So thank you, Councilmembers on. Um, let me answer those questions, um, like this. So City of Bellevue has, um, always been very collaborative regionally with Arch. Uh, and over time, one of the first things I did when I came back, I looked over time at. When we funded and when the monies came back from Arch and. Uh, there were years that we didn't have a project that was ready to go and we, uh, put money into Arch with the philosophy that. It was good for Bellevue as the east side grew in affordable housing. So when we look at our relationship with Arch and the other member cities, it has historically been very good for those reasons. Uh, because all the cities are working together to solve overall just affordability challenges on the east side. Your question, uh, at the onset relating to, uh, how aggressive we can be as staff. Uh, and as a community, therefore, and the need that we can serve. Um, we've been having discussions with the council, uh, about. The affordable housing issue and the policy and the need to be more nimble and to be more aggressive. So, uh, we are ready to, if we have a funding source like this, this was a major challenge to overcome. If the if the city had this funding source, we're ready with the staff resources. Uh, to get to work in a hurry with you all about setting those priorities and getting going. The funding stream itself doesn't start until January. Um, Tony and I have already started talking about what a debt issuance would look like if the council wanted to. Uh, create a large pot of money on the seventy, seventy-five million dollar range plus an ongoing annual stream and what we would use those monies for. Again, that would be a discussion with you all to set those priorities and put together the implementation plan. Our staff are ready to do that with you if you choose to take this action tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Barx deal.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, so just a couple of questions and and one of these is going to be for both you, Mac and and Leo. Um, what position are we in and is King County in to not just build or, um. Preserve housing, uh, units, but also to operate these facilities and provide behavioral health services? From an administrative feasibility perspective.
Uh, I can certainly speak to to Bellevue. Uh, Bellevue has not historically been in the development and own, uh, business. So generally speaking, our program is based on a creation of units with, uh, third parties, developers or nonprofits. Or housing authorities like KCHA as compared to having a Bellevue Housing Authority that will actually own and and maintain the units. So we've been primarily looking at either regulatorily incentivizing them or or funding them, but not actually owning, uh, and main and operating them. The source of monies, of course, could be used to to help with, uh, operating through those third parties as well.
Thank you. And Leo.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember. Uh, what, uh, we find is at the level of affordability that, uh, we are talking about, uh, zero to thirty, zero to sixty. The amount of, uh, tax credit that is available is extremely limited. Uh, and then as a result of that, in order to build, you have to subsidize a much higher level of the capital cost, which lowers your operations. And so your point about the ability to deliver behavioral health and other services is really essential to how these can be successful. Uh, at King County DCHS, in addition to administering affordable housing, we administer the Medicaid-funded behavioral health system for the county as well as the locally, regionally funded. Uh, behavioral health ser- uh, system and one of the key, uh, strategies that we can look at is how we. Blend together multiple resources at the regional level. In order to leverage all of those resources from best starts for kids, from the veteran seniors and human services levy. From the, uh, mental illness and drug dependency sales tax, and then from what is the largest, uh, stream for behavioral health in the community, which is the Medicaid. Uh, funding for behavioral health that the county administers, uh, which is in excess of four hundred million dollars, uh, on the biennium. Uh, and so, uh, it is not only the ability to administer those services, which King County currently does. But the ability to to leverage them and not build up separate sort of, uh, service administration systems, if you will. Uh, that has been a focus of our behavioral health work in particular over the last few years. Um, in a, in a system that is really difficult and even more fragmented than the housing system. Behavioral health is both expensive to administer and hard to blend the services, right? Uh, and it's one of the things that we think is really an advantage of of a regional approach.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, I have no questions. Thanks for the good presentation by Leo and, uh, Mac. But I do have comments, so I was just wondering when would be appropriate to make comments. I would suggest maybe by the time of the motion and discussion and action.
Uh, I think we're going to go back around and, um, if you're ready to make a comment now, you may be the first person to make a comment. How's that?
Okay. I appreciate, again, the presentation that was made by both the King County and, uh, City of Bellevue. And I especially appreciate, uh, your comment, Madam Mayor. That put in a lot of focus and the important consideration in the decision. That we are asked to make. As, you know, most people know, I have the reputation of being the fiscal hawk of the city council. So I would be the last person to expect to support a tax increase. Uh, but I feel that this is a very important, uh, issue. And I've always supported, you know, uh. Raising money to, uh, invest in good return. And I think this is one issue that's very important. It's a affect, uh, issue. We all are concerned, uh, we are interested in, uh, Bellevue's always been a very, very expensive city to live in and not affordable. So I think as the city grows, uh, this issue has been magnified. And I think it's important to do so. So I appreciate, uh, the city Bellevue has been actually. Even with the situation as we face, on the, on the leading edge of, uh, regional collaboration, cooperation. We have Arch, which is a model of collaboration between east side cities in housing development. And it's a great model and it still works. And I think I appreciate what the mayor was saying, we want to address all these issues. Uh, she raised and many others are raising different issues. We want to move quickly. We want to be nimble. Uh, and so, you know, the, so that's one thing to remember. The second thing is we also heard, uh, the city of Bellevue, you know, like Mac, uh, reported. We have a great program. We have a affordable housing policy. It's in place. But there are many and many things we can do and specific to Bellevue. And many things we, uh, are not able to do unfortunately because of revenue stream without money. So it's not that we cannot do it, we we don't want to do it, we are not, we're unable to do it, we're incapable of doing it. And we can, you know, it's because we have no, not enough money. And it's a dilemma we all face, but now we have an opportunity to get some money. And we can do it with this point one percent sales tax. And I think this is a, to me, a no brainer. Uh, it gives us, uh, ability to do all the things that we want to do for ourselves. But the same time, if it's within ourselves, that other people can provide a a partnership. Uh, you know, like we talk about, you know, we always work with other people, partnership. That's what Bellevue is good for, good at. Arch is a good model of a good example of that. And it's been, again, the model have over the last twenty-some years, it's consistently proven to be effective. So I believe that, you know, and if we want to give to the county, if they have a program that we believe it's, uh, complimentary to us. And there's nobody barring us, we heard that, to give the money to them if we want to, or we work with them or provide them with our s- us assistance. The key is we maintain our local control. You know, we, uh, cities, we always talk about when we go to federal government, any government, we always are concerned about unfunded mandate. You know, this is, again, you know, probably going down to that, uh, you know, basic fundamental difference. And how we can, uh, have the the control of our money to do the things that's really good for Bellevue, uh, right for Bellevue, suitable for. And our region is not just, we have to decide however, the key is who makes the decision, who has influence? To me, I said before many times, devil is in the detail. You know, based on what I've heard from all the council members, I'm sure there'll be a lot more. We all have questions, we have control, concerns, we have interests. We don't know many of them, we're developed, as Mac mentioned, you know, we we want to address eighty percent and below want to address thirty percent below, whatever. But we cannot do that unless, but if we have money, if we have revenue, we can do those things. So I believe that this is a good thing to do. This is something we want to do, something give us the ability. To implement our Bellevue's affordable housing strategy and we can be more aggressive, we can be more bold. We can be as courageous and bold as anybody around here can be. The key is we take care of. Situation the best we know, we can look at the detail, we can work on it, we can manage it, we can do whatever. That will be, you know, the best. To me, this is where the nimbleness, this is where the quickly, this responsiveness. Uh, if we don't do that, if we lose control, imagine, how can we make things happen? Knowing the politics as we do, we are not going to go anywhere. We'll be spending our time arguing.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
This is my statement. So I support this and I fully want to s- think that this is the thing that would be good for our, for housing. For the whole region.
Thank you. Okay, um, I I want to just address a couple of things that we've been talking about here tonight. Um, the one thing I'm really proud about with our city's response to this covid crisis has been the rental assistance. That we have all together, um, been able to provide for so many of the people who live here. I know that there are still going to be people who are going to be affected by the rental moratorium and have not paid their rent. But, um, I do know that our city has put millions of dollars, our. Human service agencies have put millions of dollars and our large employers have put millions of dollars into rental assistance. Just so people don't get to the end of that moratorium and owe all that back rent. And also our landlords have been paid. So we have made a a huge effort as a city to do that and in the surveys that I've seen, we've been pretty darn successful. So I I feel good about that. In terms of, um, supportive housing services. We already have two organizations that are providing those at that in Bellevue, Lehigh and attain housing. Now attain doesn't, I don't think they have any housing in Bellevue, but they are serving Bellevue families in Kirkland. In there and they are providing supportive services. I also think that, um, Imagine Housing does, uh, supportive services as well. So it's not like we've never done this in Bellevue and it's, the city doesn't provide it, but we work with agencies that do provide that. I'm very excited about the possibility of putting this money into housing preservation. When you look at how quickly our city is changing. And you think about all these large apartment buildings that are in walking distance to transit and schools. And older buildings have larger rooms and usually have more bedrooms and they're in great locations and, you know. All you need is a developer to come along, mow it down, evict everybody. And then build a townhouse or something that nobody can afford and that that whole community is gone. I, we saw that with Highland Village and that we were able to work with, uh, different with the state and and the county and. And, uh, agencies to preserve that housing for the tenants that live there and. I would love to do more of that. I think it would preserve a lot of the character of Bellevue. It's good for the environment. It's a, it's a most cost-effective way of creating affordable housing. And to be able to offer people at zero to thirty percent, we if we could layer, uh, things onto that, um, homes in great areas. Um, like that. Um, homes in great areas um like that would be a real opportunity for our city. So I'm excited about that. The one thing that I'm curious about, Mac, you know, with the CBDG dollars. If you don't spend them, you know, you get them every year. And if you don't have a place to spend them by a certain cutoff date, you gotta send them back to the feds or something. We should do that with this money. We should commit that we're gonna spend a certain amount of dollars that we collect every year. And if we don't spend them, if we don't commit those funds, we do give it to the county. Because the worst thing that can happen in my mind is we take this money and we don't do anything with it. But I think that, you know, this is a catalyst for Bellevue to do what we've wanted to do for a long time. I see um a consensus of support for affordable housing on this council. That has been a long time growing just through our education and, and just the realities of our, our city's development. And um I, I'm very inspired to do great things with this money. But the reality is, if we don't, there should be a cutoff date where we put that money and give it to the county to do something with it. So I, I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but I'm just throwing that out there. So next we have Councilmember Stokes. No, I'm sorry, Robertson. We're going in the same order. Councilmember Robertson.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I really appreciate all the passion um that you're bringing to this mayor. You're a hundred percent right. We, there are so many needs in Bellevue and we really need the resources in order to meet them. Um, to me, this is going to be the easiest tax vote um that I'll ever take. Um, because it's, it doesn't raise the sales tax in Bellevue what it does, because King County is going to be doing that. What it does is it makes it so that the money that is raised in Bellevue can be used in Bellevue or elsewhere, but it gives that local control. So whether we pass this or not, that the mu- the sales tax is gonna go up by point one percent. So, and as you pointed out, we have three hundred and fifty homeless students in Bellevue schools. And the coordinated entry for all has resulted in those kids getting shipped out and the district having to then bring them back, bus them back. Um, we have needs of shelter, we have needs of supportive housing, we have needs of affordable housing. There is right now, Councilmember Stokes raised an issue of the supportive housing. There is a ninety-eight unit supportive housing project being planned for East Gateway. Um, Horizon Housing run by Plymouth Housing. That as it is today will end up having the coordinated entry for all and potentially not be allowed to have congregations for the homeless shelter. And Sophia Way Shelter send their clients there for supportive housing when they're ready to move out of the shelter. To me, that is a problem because we need to make sure that we take care of the people in Bellevue. Um, we can take care of more than the people in Bellevue, but take care of the people in Bellevue first. That's what our job is. And we have significant needs. Um, I, Bellevue has shown a great um capacity in the past in both capital projects and others. At making sure that we get a good deal for things. I'll remind the council of the project, the road project in Belred. That we are going to let Sound Transit do for us. We thought they could do it cheaper. They put it out to bid. We were so horrified by the price that we bid it ourselves and we did it for less than half the cost. I think that our staff can do some of these projects and make sure that the money that is raised in Bellevue. And that is spent for the benefit of the people in our city who are hurting can be done very efficiently and effectively. And to leverage those dollars to get more done. Um, the scenario three under the Affordable Housing Strategy shows that we can get a thousand. Um, sixty percent or below AMI units at nine million dollars per biennium. This is double that. And so, you know, I think that we can really do a lot with leveraging the money. And as was discussed with Mac, there is no harm in us passing this tonight. Because if we decide that the county's plan is better or we can't use it well, we can always hand the money over to the county. But if we miss this opportunity, we miss the chance to make a real difference in the needs of the people of Bellevue. As Leo Floor said, tonight is a temporary chance to make a lasting difference. And in Bellevue, I think by doing this, we will not only make Bellevue more compassionate, but we will also make it more equitable. So I, I strongly support making a motion to pass this and doing it tonight. The people of this city deserve nothing less.
Uh, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, it's been a great conversation. Um, and I, I think we're hitting on a lot of, a lot of good themes and, and um, you know, I love the. That we're really adopting as a council, the, the concept of being nimble. Uh, that was my favorite, which I've used for a long time. That was my favorite. Uh, little nursery rhyme, Jack be nimble, Jack be quick, Jack jump over the candlestick. That's what we're doing here. This, this is, this is a hard one, I think, because um I, I have to say, um, I'm very impressed that King County. Is focusing on this particular issue and, and seeming to come together and really work on it. And I know. You know, Mr. Floor is um listening and, and I don't want his cheeks to burn, but I think he um. He does an amazing job. He's really made a difference in, in programs coming into uh the county. And I appreciate that. And I see some, um, I think things are a little different than they've been in the past in terms of working on and working together. And I, I do believe that regionalism is very, very important and we're, we're kind of skirting around that. I think we recognize it. And I, I don't want us to get hung up too much on the um, the local control thing because that. That is kind of a leftover of um the fights between county and others. And the cities want to have local control, but then they don't do anything with it. So what we're seeing is we want to have, we want to be real partners. We want to have conversations. We want to be involved in the decisions. We want to move forward. And we want to uh have differences of opinion sometimes and act on it. I do think that we have to be careful. Um, my only caveat is we don't see this as just a, a pile of money. We can go off and do kind of anything we want to do touching on affordable housing or, or homelessness. I think it is important because this is a specific program that is based on things that have changed since two thousand seventeen. Two thousand will change more. I think um Leo is correct that um we, we may face an even greater. Need for this type of uh housing uh sometime in the first part of the year. I mean, things are gonna get, get really scary just because uh, you know, change and, and, and aid running out and all these other things. It's gonna be interesting. So I, I would like to see and make sure that, that's why I was asking the questions is I, I think we need to. Not just see this as a bucket of money that we could go off and do. Uh, a lot of things having to do with homelessness or, or affordable housing. But that we understand that this is a big need and it gives us, and we want to do something in it so that we. We can focus our, use this money that we have control over in terms of focusing where it's gonna go. How we can work with the county and um not get tempted to take the money and do something else in housing. That really is not covered by the, the intent of the bill. And I, you know, and, and, and it's, it's a lot of money uh for us. And um I think if we use it wisely, I think then we'll end up in a good relationship with the rest of the county and um. And, and make this really work well. Uh, it, it's a additional or supplement to what we're talking about, not a replacement of what we uh might raise ourselves. So I, I, I support us going forward um and um. Uh, opting to pass the resolution and I appreciate the fact that uh several council members have said clearly that. We work with the city, with the county. And if their program as it comes up and the way they're approaching it all is something that we feel. Uh, is good for Bellevue and we're comfortable with or the re- the, the area. Um, because as, as we say, as we were saying in the other things we're talking about too, we're, we're. We're part of the east side and, and the good example of that is uh, which we like, is talking about Arch, which is uh a clear. Uh, yeah, uh, uh, example of us working regionally and sometimes um not doing something. Or, or taking a backseat because the, the need is over in other places. So I just don't want it to be portrayed as we're just, Bellevue is just being selfish about it or want to control. What we want to do is have a partnership, a strong partnership with King County and the other cities. And um, this gives us an opportunity and, and also be at the table. And one of the things that concerned me and, and, and has led me to feel this is important. Is the fact that this is seems to, it's come together quickly and we, we all talk about not taking forever to get something done. Uh, so having something done quickly is, is important in this crisis. But at the same time, uh, I, I just, I do think, and I've been talking to other people, I, I've said, who are in, involved in this. That uh, we could have done this better. We could have been in a place where we could have had conversations and uh forged a partnership. So I think it gives us the opportunity to say tonight that we are going to uh take control. At this point, but I again appreciate several council members in saying that. Uh, let's, let's have conversations with the, with um, the county. Let's talk about what we need to do in this area. Let's talk about how this will help us use funding and have focus on other parts that we want to do. And I think in Turk, in talking to.
Councilmember Stokes, can we, would you like, will we write, wrap it up? Thank you.
This is important.
It is, I know.
Wrap it up. Um, I think in talking to other, uh, to people in the, in the private sector working with this. I think there is an understanding that, that um this is complex and we need to work together. And that uh this will, if we do what we're talking about doing, it will actually be an incentive for Bellevue to really focus on. And, and uh take our uh plan, our strategies and put them in place. So it's, I think we're looking at is this, this will help us and it's actually a, it's kind of a, a boost to us to say, okay, let's really get serious on this. We already started having the conversation last time. So I think it's, it's a good thing to do, but let's keep in mind, we want to work closely with the county, see how this works. And uh be, be flexible and see how it works out. And, and then we can always make changes. We can always work with them. But we get to be part at the table. We get to have some control. And I think that's important.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh agree, a great conversation tonight about this very uh important topic. And um want to thank all the uh feedback that we received today. Um, from a number of different uh organizations that uh are, are very uh passionate about this issue as well. Um, or provide services uh in, in, in this area. Um, and I agree with Councilmember Lee, it does feel a little odd to be talking about um a tax increase during uh, during a pandemic. Uh, during a time when economically so many people are, are, are hurting. But um, you know, it, it is what it is and it is what's in front of us. And there's been a lot of great comments by my, my colleagues here tonight. You know, it's, I, I don't think this conversation, I think Councilmember Stokes hit it right. I don't think this conversation at all is about, you know, signaling that um this is a lack of support for homelessness intervention. Uh, like permanent supportive housing. Uh, we're not signaling either that we don't want to work with and partner with King County. We're also not signaling that we don't think that regionalism is important. All those things are very important. Um, but given where we are today, given the fact that um there is uh no plan or draft of a plan that's been put forward yet. Um, I don't see any harm at, at this point, moving forward with this resolution. Uh, because quite frankly, we have a tremendous staff that can take this money, implement. And with, you know, the affordable housing strategy as Matt had mentioned, specifically the A1 and C1 strategies. And we can immediately start doing some very good things with this money. That is not to say that at some point, um, you know, nine months, a year, two years, whenever we're ready to have that conversation with King County to change this. I think it sounds like to me like we're all willing to do that and have that conversation to see what, what we can do. But um as, as, as the mayor highlighted earlier and um her excellent comments, um, you know, there is a real need here in Bellevue. We know where that need is, especially um uh, in the example of kids in, in our Bellevue School District who could really need the help. Um, we can do a lot of good immediately. And I, I think it's upon us, uh, because we're so um hyper focused. And understand the needs of Bellevue residents, I think it's upon all of us to, to do the right thing and use the money immediately. Make that direct impact immediately. Uh, and again, have that conversation, ongoing conversation uh with King County. And we can adjust as we move forward, but uh I'm, I'm supportive of this uh resolution. And again, I really appreciate all the comments by my uh colleagues tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. And I too appreciate all the comments from my colleagues. You know, to me, regional collaboration to get things done is super important. I see this as a potential to have seed money to work in partnership. And I would say not just with the county, but also with businesses, right? So Microsoft came forward quite a while ago about having some seed money and wanting to do more with affordable housing. So as we look at this money, I think we really need to work on that. You know, I see our Arch with fifteen cities that work together to build as a, a sub-regional. Uh, collaboration also around affordable housing. I guess for me, I would definitely want to make sure that we're leveraging the money to the maximum extent that we can. Meaning that uh, Mac, you mentioned that the nine million dollars over twenty years, the fifty percent. Could be bonded would be about seventy-five million dollars. So to me, I want, I would like our colleagues to really think about then going to the deepest affordability we can. Just because the res- the legislation allows for up to sixty percent. Doesn't mean that we couldn't ourselves really hone in on the most of uh deep affordability. Where it's only twenty-five percent of what we built from Arch and we've got to do more in that area. Um, the other one I keep thinking about is that, you know, we talked a lot about local control. And yet, Mac, I think you said it best, which is really the question is, how are we gonna spend the tax stream? And how do we maximize its use? And to me, I'd like us to really think hard about that part of it. And I understand that right now because of the urgency, we don't have the information yet from the county. I mean, I think a couple of you alluded to it. And so I'm wondering if as part of this um vote. We can actually um amend to add a sentence that says, we're gonna enact this tax. And with a caveat that if we can get to an MOU with King County where we can actually get to what we want. That we're willing then to sunset our portion of the tax, which I believe Councilmember Robertson brought up maybe a couple of rounds ago. But let's make it part of what we're adopting. Just like I think Mayor, you brought up the, the issue around, you know, if we're not gonna use the money, then I think we want to hold ourselves accountable. To me, it's easy to just say that, oh, at any point we could, we could get rid of it. Um, and yet if we're truly working in partnership and collaboration and regionally, then we actually want to set ourselves some. Um, some intentionality around looking at a partnership and an MOU. And if at the end of the day, we are not successful at doing that, the tax moves forward. But if we are, then we've actually committed to actually working hard with the county to make something happen. So um my, my cup of, couple of cents there of.
Okay, I might ask you to kind of draft some language to pre- present to the council. But um we'll go continue on. Councilmember Barxdale.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Ooh, tough decisions. Um, but I appreciate all the conversations that, that have been happening so far that have happened. Um, so I, I think we've, we've had a tough time with the zero to thirty uh AMI and I think that's something that we. Um, whatever decision happens tonight or uh happens tonight, that still needs to maintain be a priority. You know, I, I, I do have this question around, or it's not a question, but this perspective that I, I do think King County is. Best positioned when it comes to um behavioral health services. Um, and operating um. Affordable housing units. Um, you know, I just wonder, you know, we're, we're putting, we're, we're expecting King County to have an implementation. You know, I just wonder, you know, we're, we're putting, we're expecting King County to have an implementation plan. I know we have our affordable housing strategy. We also don't have an implementation plan either, right? We have the strategy. So I just, I just, if we weren't, I know that the thought of voting tonight to accept the resolution and then provide it to King County if we like their plan. I mean, can we not say if each of us come up with an implementation plan? And before we, so I guess that would mean passing the resolution tonight, but not do anything with it until we both have implementation plans and decide where, where it should go. I guess I also have a question for, for Leo in terms of what's the risk of passing this resolution tonight, or what's the impact rather?
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I will presume to characterize risk for the city of Bellevue as to the impact. The, looking at the projections for 2021, it looks like we would bring the countywide. We still do have, I believe it's 32 or 33 cities that are moving forward with regional plan. And this would take the total revenue down close to about $50 million per year next year, which would cut into the ability to bond for the $400 million amount. Again, I think credibility is important here. I'm not trying to doomsday. Just trying to say that this does move us below the amount at which we could do the full bond and the full approach.
Do you want to continue, Councilmember Barksdale?
I'll hold out for now. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to extend our, I, I think that somebody should make a motion to extend our meeting to 10:45. It can always end early. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
So two things for me that
Yeah, I, 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 I don't, I don't, I say no, because we, we sure we're ready for vote, I believe, yeah, for questions. So it's, yeah. We still have 25, 20 minutes to go before we reach 10:30.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? I assume Yeah, okay, that's good. So two things are coming out of this, sticking out of this conversation for me. One is, you know, the desire to continue partnering with the county and wondering what that would look like. So I wonder, I don't know, Mac, if you're, can I, can answer that on the fly like, because it's a big question. But I, I would like to ask you that. And the other thing that's so intriguing to me, and you know, I've been on representing our, our city on the mid-board, Mental Illness Drug Penancy Board that funds supportive services for supportive housing. And I hate to tell you this, but of all the money that gets collected from our taxes in Bellevue, very, very, very little of it comes back to Bellevue. And so when I see the work that our agencies on the east side in East King County are doing and, you know, all the private funding that get to provide those kinds of services and all the fundraising that they do, I'm pretty confident myself that they can expand their operations, given additional funding that they need. And at the same time, I'm very, it's very important to me that we be a team player in the region and that we help the county meet the needs of the entire county. We are a member of King County. And everybody, every city has unique and important needs. And knowing that we're a big player, I think we need to make sure that we continue to assist the other cities in reaching, in, in, in addressing their needs. And we can do that through the county. We can do that through Arch. We can do that through other regional collaborations. But to me, that is a very important part of what we're deciding on tonight. So Mac, can you answer that first question or you can defer?
I think I'd like to answer in spirit and talk about what we would plan to do should the council enact the resolution this evening. It's always going to be the city's approach from a regionalism standpoint to want to be an excellent partner with all of our intergovernmental entities and particularly King County. We've done a lot of work in the field of affordable housing. In fact, a lot of the, the monies that go into the projects we have in the city involve monies that have come from King County. So we would assume that the working relationship would be as we work with our city council on our implementation plan and the county begins to further define its implementation plan and which projects and/or services the county's thinking about funding in Bellevue, we'd be working on a collaborative arrangement for those services, you know, and the things that the county views in Bellevue. And then the monies that are still left over, we would be talking with this, our city council about spending on other projects with other partners in Bellevue or would the city want to fund things outside of Bellevue, for example. But we would be working through that in a collaborative way, not as a contractual thing that would be occurring as part of the resolution adoption tonight.
Thank you. That's a good answer. Okay, Councilmember Robertson, do you have any more questions or comments?
No, I don't. I think this makes a lot of sense. We can take up the issues of partnerships at a later time. I am ready to vote on the resolution tonight. As soon as a motion is made, I will be voting yes. I think that this is a great opportunity to really meet a lot of the growing needs in Bellevue.
I'm going to jump to Councilmembers Zahn, because I know you kind of had a tweet that you wanted to put in. I wonder if that's something we need to do tonight or we could bring it up at another time.
Brad's waving his hand.
I get a, I have a sense, our city manager would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. You know, I just want to make sure that whatever, there's a lot of concepts that are being thrown around. We have our city attorney here because there are some legal limitations on what we can do. And I want to just ask our city attorney if there, if she'd like to comment on some of what she's been hearing tonight from a legal perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Yes, the whole set of issues around what we could and couldn't do in terms of conditioning, when we would tax and when we wouldn't tax are, can be complicated. And that's not to say that there might not be something that, you know, we could look at. But tonight, I'd be concerned about starting to agree to condition a tax without having some chance to really look at the legal limitations and authority around what we can do there.
Okay, so I think that's an answer to my question to, do you, Councilmembers Zahn? Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, so I appreciate getting the feedback from the city attorney's office so that we can better understand. So I would say that for me then, I just want to make sure as we are getting ready to take the vote that this, that we, the city manager and Mac really works hard with legal to come back to us in a timely way and really help us with the comments that you heard. So I can appreciate the fact that in this vote, we don't want to bake this into that language. And yet, I, I really believe that we need to hold ourselves mutually accountable for really working through what does an implementation plan look like? How do we work in partnership with the county and other cities as we are talking more broadly about Arch? And, and really, I would say the other one is, is committing or, or making a commitment to that it isn't just about collecting the eight or nine million dollars a year. It's about the collective impact of being able to bond that so that we actually can respond quickly if we have units available for preservation. Because if, if we're only holding on to local control and collecting the nine million a year, that does not buy us a lot of property to really move things forward. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
And thank you for that. Councilmember Stokes, do you have any more comments or questions?
You're muted, Councilmember Stokes. You're muted.
I'm muted. Okay, somebody turned it off. All right, what I'm, what I said was, I, I think tonight, we, we, these are good ideas we've had and a lot to talk about. But we keep it simple. We vote for the resolution as it is and we start immediately working on this. And as soon as King County gets further along, we, I think we all agree, we want to look at that. This is not a, you know, permanent situation necessarily. And I think it's, it's been a very good conversation and I really appreciate Leo for being here and talking with us and the feedback I've gotten from other people on this. And I, I feel comfortable that we're coming out of this in a good position. And I see this as something that has, in an interesting way, has gotten us, I think, further down the line in terms of really being committed to taking our affordable housing strategy, realizing we're not still back in 2017. We're in 2020 and 2021 is going to be different. And we have different needs and move forward. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I'm comfortable with taking a vote that says we're not going to enter into this with the county. But we really want to have a strong relationship and working together. And this is just, this is just a pause in, in the, the overall movement with the county and, and everybody to really address the issues of homelessness and affordable housing all up and down the scale. And I think it's really moved Bellevue, and I'm proud of this, to really focus on below the 60%. And I think that's a very positive outcome of the conversations. And to, to really make a public statement that we are serious about this and we're going to take on some responsibility and take on probably some heat to do what we think is in the best interest of Bellevue and the region.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Okay, we have 15 more minutes to wrap this up or extend the meeting. So Deputy Mayor, I'll get to you, Councilmember Lee. I'm going to go in order if that's okay with you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, any more questions or comments?
No, none for me. Ready to move this forward. Thank you.
Okay, and I jumped to you, Councilmembers Zahn already. So Councilmember Barksdale?
I'm comfortable with moving forward. I do just want to make sure that we're focused on the 30 and lower percent AMI and that we do have our own implementation plan that, and have a clear path for partnership as well.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I am ready to vote, but I just want to confirm that, you know, this vote is really addressing all the concern that the council members raise, that Bellevue has demonstrated over the last 20 some years, our regional approach, collaboration. And we have, Arch is a prime example. And, and as talked about, you know, there's nothing that is, prevents us from collaborating, cooperating with anybody else, including the county council, especially with the county council. And, you know, addressing today's communication with the council early on, the beginning of the meeting, you know, a couple of members mentioned about their concern about our vote. And we, we, we heard them. And we actually, they are actually our partners in this housing. So they have the experience. We never do things just because it's good for us and we screw anybody else. We don't. And I think we can trust ourselves. I hope the council. Well, I hope we ourselves, seven of us, have the confidence and trust that we can make the right decisions. No matter what we do, moving forward after we prove this, this motion, we always can do things. We, anytime four of us says we'll change, we'll change. We haven't. We always make good decisions. If tomorrow we should do something, we can immediately change this vote. And if we, so anytime we see an opportunity, based on the discussion, I have great confidence and trust that we have this, we share the same vision. We want to do the right thing for the city of Bellevue, for the region, for the people, the most importantly, who we, we want to take care of. Like, as the mayor said very clearly, you know, we have our particular needs, our schoolchildren, homeless. And it may not be somewhere else, nobody would think about it, but we do, we have to address it. And the best way, the most number way is to, number one, have the money to do. And two, you know, we are the only person, the seven councilmembers with our staff, we decide we can do it. We don't need to go through a regional discussion and trying to figure out the seven, 38 cities. Are we all agree? Or is the King County Council may feel this way or that way? No, I think we talk about that. So the good thing is, what's really different from Bellevue is that we are fortunate that we have this revenue stream that's provided for us, this opportunity. And I completely agree. If we cannot do anything, we, we don't need to spend the money. This, I hope the seven of us say, why are we keeping the money? We will figure out some way to take care of it. If somebody who can do better job, we'll, we'll, we'll make that happen. And one thing that nobody has mentioned, we'll give the money back to the, to the voters. If we, if we cannot spend that money, give it back to them. Don't get forced because we have to do something, because we've got the money. It's burning our pocket. No, it isn't. We make decisions based on rational choices, the right time to meet the right problems. And we, the council made those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So I'm hearing some common themes here. I hope that staff can reconvene us quickly to address, which is, you know, we want rapid action on this, creating a plan of how we can utilize funds with a focus on 0 to 30% AMI, because really that's, the House bill was created just to solve that most difficult to solve populations problem. And then continued, how we can continue to collaborate with our regional partners. So I think we've covered everything and we will have more clarifying conversations on the next steps. Mr. Miyake, will we be able to see this before us again sooner than later? What's your thought?
I, I think we heard lots of comments here. I committed to convene the staff and get this back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Okay, so do we Oh, excuse me, Councilmembers Zahn?
Can I just add one comment? Because I, I do think that we did get some, some emails in. And I'd like to make sure that when staff are looking at this, that you're reaching out to some of the providers on the east side, where we got an email where they really supported the King County plan. So I'd like to understand what those nuances are so that when we are implementing and developing the plan here, that we don't lose sight of the fact that they had some concerns about us doing this ourselves versus being part of the county. So I'd like to make sure that we're reaching out to those providers that can give us that feedback. So I'd like to just add that to the, the ask of staff.
And you reminded me of the other common focus, which was on bonding, not just collecting taxes. So that should be a big part of this from staff as well. Okay, thank you. So with that, is there a motion for this resolution?
I move to adopt resolution 9826, imposing additional sales and use tax of 1/10 of 1% for housing and related services as authorized in RCW 82 dot 14 dot 530.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. And I believe this is the end of our meeting. Thank you very much. A Zoom meeting lasting this long is really tough. And I thank you, everybody, for your participation and for everybody involved. Very good discussions tonight. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.